City Council regular meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time now is six oh two P M. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order and twenty nine twenty and the orders of the Ventura County Public Health Officer issued March twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Stay well at home order. Madam Clerk, can we take roll call, please?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Present.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Here. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any closed session general public comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, could you please read the closed session items into the record?
Absolutely, Mayor Gama. There is one item on closed session for tonight. It is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. The agency designated representatives are Brad Connor, City Manager, and Charles Parretts, interim deputy city manager. And the employee association in question is S E I U Service Employees International Union Local seven twenty one.
Thank you. Do any council members have any conflicts of interest to disclose for the listed closed session agenda item? Hearing none, we will now recess into closed session. The time is six oh three P M. And the city council will recess to closed session. Thank you.
Regular city council meeting of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one and the special meetings of the surplus property authority and the Port Wainimi Housing Authority. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time now is six fifty-four P M. And I apologize for us being stuck in closed session a little longer than we wanted to. If you could, please stand and join me for our flag salute. And as soon as our digital flag is up, I'll lead us. Thank you very much, Charles. If you could, please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
Of the United States
States of America And to the Republic
Republic
For which it stands One nation
Under God
Under God Indivisible Liberty Justice
Okay. We should each have a little part to say so we can do it in unison. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the governor's executive order N twenty-nine twenty and the orders of the Ventura County Public Health Officer issued March twentieth, twenty twenty. Stay well at home order. The city council chamber has been closed for far too long and we look forward to it coming back to life. And council members and staff are participating remotely to help play our part in minimizing the spread of COVID nineteen. The public was informed in advance of this meeting how to submit all public comments to our city clerk. The city clerk has compiled all submissions and those received prior to the five P M deadline today will be read into the record and they have been distributed to the city council to review prior to this meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Present.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Here. Tonight, oh, Mr. City Attorney, can you please report out on our closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Gama. There was no reportable action in the closed session tonight.
Thank you, sir. Tonight's inspiration will be provided by Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. Do I have? Oh, I do. So I, am I admitting people?
Uh, no, no need to do that, Councilmember.
Okay. Yeah, I just popped up on my screen. Sorry. Okay, so my inspiration tonight is my husband, Rick Perez. Um, I thought it important to bring attention to him because he never takes credit for anything, doesn't want any type of recognition, um, seeks to avoid any type of recognition. And I think all his accomplishments and everything that I've seen him do over the past few years deserves to be noted. And you all know him as Sergeant Rick Perez. And there's a few things you may not know about him. So I'll just give a brief background. So he grew up in the seventies and eighties in Santa Paula. And as a young boy, he had a tal- a talent for drawing. His mother used his, this interest to occupy a rambunctious young boy. He'd been drawing since he was about five years old. He also had a love for comic books and a neighbor would bribe him with a Superman comic in exchange for a drawing. So his life in Santa Paula was anything but stable. He was a kid running around the streets at ten years old with no guidance or structure until he found Felix Vega, who taught local kids in the neighborhood and tried to give them a place. He taught them boxing. Not only did Coach Vega teach Rick how to box, he also became an important mentor and a kind of a father-like figure for Rick. And he taught him much discipline. Rick didn't grow up with much in terms of parental guidance. His father was in and out of his life and his mother was a single mom working to raise five children. At a one point, the boxing gym closed for young boys and Rick needed other activities, which led to freestyle art and breakdancing. And as you can see here, he's still quite good at breakdancing.
We can't see it.
You can't see it?
Remember Perez? You're, you're not sharing your screen.
I am not sharing my screen.
You can hear the music.
Hold on. I hit the button and that's where it went weird. Okay. So I was supposed to get a share screen from somebody, was I not?
You are a co-host. Um, if you look at the bottom of the screen, there's a button that says share screen. And then you can select whatever file you wish to show on the screen.
Share screen. I did this. I don't know why it didn't go through. I apologize. Okay. So, so I'll start with them. Can you, everybody see it now?
Yes.
Okay. So after a brief prelude out of boxing, he got into freestyle art and breakdancing. And he's still a good breakdancer. All right. So as a young teenager, he found himself in minor trouble. And during those years, he stayed in contact with Coach Vega and eventually it turned, returned to boxing. He fought for the next six years at an amateur fighter with over fifty fights and he was ranked one of the top in the tri-counts. In his early twenties, he eventually moved away from boxing and used that training and discipline to start his career in public service. First as a volunteer firefighter while working a full-time job. He was part of the fire crew in nineteen ninety-two that was sent down to help with the Los Angeles riots. And a close friend were police officers and encouraged him to apply for the academy where he graduated and was hired on with Port Wainimi. And he's going on to his twenty-seventh year. And during this time, he has worked in various special units and as a detective where he's one of the officers on the scene for the tragic shooting at the Wainimi High School in two thousand and one. He's currently a sergeant and a forensic composite artist for all agencies, including the F B I. So the thing that inspired me most was that when I met Rick, he was a single father raising two boys. He became a father early and he started teaching his sons boxing from the time they were in diapers. He started training and mentoring young men. They would come into the local gym, which used to be known as B S F and it was right there in Bolbr Park. And it gave an opportunity for all children, all adults, young men of all walks of life to come in and get off the streets. And he did this for many years before it closed. He was trying to teach the others the important life lessons he learned from his own mentor and coach. And as a police officer, he uses his life skills to try and help others and try to change their behavior and instill in them the values he has learned. He also went back to school eventually and earned his bachelor's degree. And as a volunteer, he teaches art at his son's high school. As I said, when I met him, I learned he was a single father raising two young boys and trying to juggle a career as a police officer. And over the years, I have come to know his discipline and structure, his love for people, the dedication he has to his family and his love for God. And I have witnessed his ability to mentor young men and guide them to better days and to become their best self. This is him teaching his young sons how to box. He has brought a lot into my life and the lives of others. And I don't think he realizes how much he can give back to the community that he lives in, in the position that he's in. It puts him in a unique ability to connect with so many people who are hurting. He took on a single mom with three children who were broken and gave them structure and stability. And he believed in me and helped me be successful in my election campaign. His knowledge of the city and connection to his community was invaluable, pushing me every day to keep going, even when I thought I was done and too tired to walk anymore. And after all of this, he still makes time to wash dishes. And this is why he is my inspiration.
Thank you very much. I, I do want to say that we do need more people like Sergeant Perez in our community. And as a council, we've made it a priority to make the youth of our community, the V I Ps of our community. And anyone out there listening, take the lead of Sergeant Perez and get involved, support the youth of our community. It's so important, especially right now coming out of COVID. The youth of our community have, have suffered greatly over this last year. So thank you very much for that inspiration. And we all hopefully can be inspired to do something positive for youth. Again, thank you, Sergeant Perez, for all your dedication to our community and especially the youth of our community. Very important. Okay, moving on. May I have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk, could we take a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
And Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Are there any general public comments to be read into the record at this time?
Yes, sir, there are. There was one received from Mr. Steve Kinney, the president of Reach. And it reads, "Good evening, Mayor Gama and council members. The Reach Board of Directors has scheduled the installation of the third round of bricks purchased by members of the community in support of the Reach mission. This event will take place on Thursday, May twenty-seventh at one P M at the Reach Brick Enclosure adjacent to the Wainimi Pier. We have notified and invited all who purchase these bricks to attend and witness the actual installation, which will be carried out by staff from the city's facility maintenance division. We extend our appreciation to Gabby Basua and her crew for offering to do the installation. And we invite the council and the public to attend this celebratory occasion. Finally, we want to again thank all the members of the Wainimi community who have supported Reach this year and in the past with their purchase of our bricks. Thank you, Steve Kinney." And that concludes our public comments.
Madam Clerk, is there a date for the presentation? I think I may have missed it.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, the event will be Thursday, May twenty-seventh at one o'clock P M. And that's just adjacent to the Wainimi Pier.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure, and I'll send out a calendar invite for council for that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, moving on to presentations, our first presentation of tonight is from the Ventura County Lodging Association. Brian Tucker will make the presentation. Mr. Tucker, if you're ready, we're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to share my screen.
Sunsets, sunrises, whales, dolphins, and surfing, right?
That's it. I was going off the inspiration provided by Councilmember Perez. Hopefully, uh, this presentation will provide a little bit of inspiration on, uh, how we're actually helping all the businesses in Port Wainimi and the rest of the cities that I represent.
Beautiful.
So to level set the conversation this evening. Thank you. Yeah, that's a, that's one of our shots, actually, obviously from Port Wainimi. Um, as this photo is, um, as well. So to level set the conversation, again, my name is Brian Tucker. I'm the executive director of the Ventura County Lodging Association. And we have the hotels that are in Camrio, Oxnard, Ventura and Port Wainimi. So this evening, I'd like to just give a brief update about who we are as an organization. I have not had an opportunity to speak in front of council for, I believe it's been a couple of years. Twenty eighteen was the last time. So hopefully this will be a good refresher. Uh, we also have some new travel impacts provided by the industry, so I'm excited to share those with you. Just released additionally is some industry forecast on what we could expect to see um, in regard to travel in California and in our local communities. Our regional performance on how we stack up against the rest of the nation and the state right here in Ventura County Coast. What our outreach strategy is to inspire visitation, to come visit, um, our great region. And I have some resources that I'll leave you all with that could be acted on today, not only by council, but any of the small businesses in Port Wainimi that will hopefully, um, allow you all to leverage our resources to make better decisions based on some of the information that we have. So with that, just really quick, we're a five oh one C six and as I mentioned, we encompass the cities of Camrio, Oxnard, Ventura and Port Wainimi. The company name is the Ventura County Lodging Association, but you've probably heard of us by Ventura County Coast, which is the consumer-facing brand name. Our mission is simply to promote tourism through targeted marketing, sales and public relations. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with the tourism ecosystem, but let me, I, I just want to paint a picture for you real quick. So Brand USA, U S Travel is, is kind of the outer ring of this bullet. When it comes to travel and tourism, notwithstanding domestic, if they're not coming to the United States, they're certainly not coming to Port Wainimi. So when we're looking at at least the international spectrum, uh, we work very closely with Brand USA and U S Travel. And then as you get a little tighter into the state of California, I'm so proud to report, and as I'm sure you all know, when it comes to travel and tourism throughout the entire country, California is the gold standard and we work hand in hand with the state. As they inspire visitation to California, we're that regional ring where we drill down and inspire people to choose Ventura County Coast when they're thinking about their travel plans. And then when you get down to the city and town ring, that's where we hand that inspiration off to the local authorities. In this case, Port Wainimi. And obviously, we're trying to drive room nights to drive that incremental T O T and spending in all of the businesses and our community partners. That's where the retail's right in the middle. So that's kind of the tourism ecosystem. And if you haven't seen already, um, a lot of the Visit California commercials that are actually hitting the airwaves right now, I'm sure you'll start, if you haven't noticed them already, after I've provided this presentation, it'll probably rise to the top. Um, and you'll start to see a lot of those Visit California, um, commercials coming out. So here's some brand new information with regard to travel impacts. Not only travel impacts, but a forecast that we just received from one of our data partners. This is actually a shot, um, out at Port Wainimi as well. Scott, we were able to work with Scott, your public information officer, to help set up some of these shots. And this is a brand new, uh, brand new picture. Um, you're the first people that are actually getting a chance to see it. So currently, our numbers are from twenty nineteen. This is state numbers when it comes to travel-related spending. I just wanted to take it from a high level and then we'll drill down a little bit. So when it comes to travel-related spending in the state of California, So when it comes to travel-related spending in the state of California in 2019, it accounted for $144.9 billion. That translated into $12.2 billion in local and state revenue. And obviously, the employment numbers, this is pre-pandemic, mind you. Um, employment, 1.2 million individuals were employed within our sector in the state of California. And just to take a snapshot of the growth from 2010 up until that peak of the pandemic, we've experienced in the state year-over-year growth. And I pulled a snapshot for you all so you could see when individuals enter a market, where there's dollars are being spent. Obviously, we're trying to drive room nights, which is the accommodations. But when individuals are in market, they're obviously also spending on arts and entertainment, food service, food stores, local transportation, so on and so forth. All of those elements help bolster and boost the economic impact that the industry has on our destination. So we're doing everything we can to inspire visitation, come infuse all of our local economies um, with those, with those dollars. So this is a brand new report that just came out um, from Tourism Economics. As you can see here, this is a travel outlook as we're looking all the way through 2025. And the international travel, we're looking at inbound travel in um, 2020 fell 79%. And it's expected to reach just 41% of those 2019 levels in 2021. I think this chart illustrates it pretty well. If you look at the colors of blue, international, domestic, and overseas numbers accordingly from 2020 to 2025. When we're talking about domestic travel, which quite frankly is really our sweet spot, we have a small international market comparatively speaking, but domestic is really our sweet spot. Um, and we're looking at domestic travel fell 49%. We all know it. Um, we all felt it, not only in the workforce, but the visitation, the bottom line dollars to all of our communities. Fell 49% in 2020. And domestic travel is expected to rebound to 75% of those 2019 levels in 2021. At 2019, as you saw the graph, year-over-year increases, that was, I mean, we were, the trajectory and the runway was very long. So the in-depth for both of these forecasts is 2019, just for context. And then overseas arrivals fell by 84% in 2020. And they're expected to rebound to 33% of the 2019 levels in 2021. And I'll let you know where to access this full report by Tourism Economics, but these are the highlights that I wanted to share with you all. Then when it comes to spending, when we're looking at international travel spending, that inbound spending fell by 81.2%. Um, in 2020, it's expected to reach 32% of those 2019 spending this year. And again, domestic travel, where we have a really keen eye, fell by 48.8% in 2020. And that domestic travel is expected to reach 76% of those 2019 levels this year. And recovery to those 2019 levels is not expected to happen until 2023. And you can see right there at 2023, we're 101, um, with 100 being the index in 2019. And this month, you'll notice the California Tourism Month in the bottom right-hand corner of the presentation deck. This month, the entire month is California Tourism Month. This is the month, um, Visit California releases all the new economic impact data. So as soon as that data is available, I'll have it available on our website, but um, this is what we're looking at as of um, today. And this is a brand new report that I just received last week. Here's another picture from uh, Port Waenimi out there. Beautiful beaches. We've got to love the beaches in Port Waenimi, our biggest selling point um, by far. So we talked about from a state, we're talking about Ventura County impact numbers. So again, with 2019, right here in Ventura County, total travel spending was more than $1.8 billion. And I mentioned, similar to California's trajectory over the last 10 years, we've experienced the same thing with an increase of 34% over those last um, 10 years. Travel-related jobs, again, pre-pandemic, we've lost about half of these jobs. We have a major workforce um, problem on our hands, as many industries do. We're working behind the scenes to solve that. But right here in Ventura County Coast, 17,000 jobs were attributed to travel and tourism in our local community. And the bottom line for all of our local partners, the local tax revenue as a result of the visitation to Ventura County Coast, $57 million. Here's some really interesting stats. We also, we have a very robust market research program. And the research is available to any members of council, any members of the community to again, help you all make better decisions and um, see what we're seeing. So in our travel impacts report for 2019, it was interesting to note that individuals that come to our community, their average length of stay is 2.6 nights. And the average number of people that come to our communities is 2.7 individuals per trip. Here's what's really interesting. When you look at how the money is being spent, individuals that stay in a hotel um, or short, short vacation rental, spend $600 per person. And that is compared to an individual that would say, say with family or friends in Port Waenimi, for instance, they would only be spending $230 per person. So obviously, trying to get individuals into our accommodations is the utmost importance. And when you look at the next line, travel party per person spend, $1,633 per travel party if they're staying in a hotel versus that same travel party if they were staying again with family and friends. So it's extremely important to us to drive those room nights. And it drills down to the bottom line spend in all of our communities. That translates to TOT and other um, tax revenue generated by spending in all of our communities. And we partner again really closely with Visit California. Dean Running and Associates is our research partner on all the research, as well as tourism economics and a number of other uh, data partners that we take available data and then we have programs, again, that we drill down to get to what it means for our local communities. And again, any data I could provide to any of you at any time, please let me know. I'm happy to do so. And when you're looking at, I'm really proud of this slide um, for all of our communities that we represent, Camrio, Oxnard, Ventura, and Port Waenimi. This is how we measure performance. I'm sure you may be aware of occupancy, ADR stands for average daily rate, and RevPAR is revenue per available room. These are the latest stats that I have as of March. I should get the new, I should get full stats here later this week. But I did want to provide a snapshot that our little region right here. Um, we're outpacing the national average and the state averages in virtually every category. And we've been doing this month over month over month. And by a little bit, you'll look at our occupancy numbers. National average at 55%, the state average at 56%, and our region right here, 73%. Um, so I'm, and, and these numbers, again, translate to bottom line revenue for all of our local businesses, community partners, and cities. So this, this is a slide I'm really proud of, and it's through our efforts that we're being able to see these type of numbers. And also, I'd like to point out, we mentioned the forecast, what the forecast is for the state and the industry to rebound. You could see we're well ahead of what the national state averages are. I, I might be optimistic, but I have all the confidence in all of our partners and the stakeholders that are at the table. I think we are going to rebound faster than most in, in the nation as well as California, based on our strategic framework as we continue to inspire visitation um, to our communities. So I just want to kind of paint, we got into the numbers. I was a little deep. I love numbers. We measure everything. Sometimes stuff works, sometimes it doesn't. And we'll take those inputs to make better decisions. And one of the cornerstones that we do is use data to make decisions. So I just want to frame it up on what our outreach strategy looks like. I just wanted to throw this in there because you'll see a lot of beach imagery and a lot of nice lifestyle shots, but it's not by accident. We constantly are doing our own research as well as giving industry research. And what really rises to the top for us anyway, um, and, and our travel tourism industry is just simply going to the beach. You can see from this graphic right here. Nothing really even comes close other than, you know, you're, the open spaces, the abundance of resources, food, beach, um, attending an outdoor event or festival, which is right in line with the Waenimi Beach Festival that's coming up, which is really exciting.
... made his plan for Ventura Road. Ventura Road is now resurfaced.
And moving forward, so we take that data and put it into our marketing and recovery plan. So our full plan, we've had to pare back because we were, we communicate to people outside of the state of California to bring that business in, spend the money, and then they return back to their homes. Um, throughout the COVID pandemic, we've pared it back and put together a complete COVID-19 recovery strategy, which I'll talk about high level here in a minute. But in a typical year, which we're going to get back to here pretty quick, our target markets that we're trying to communicate to and inspire visitation to our region is our build markets, our Arizona, Nevada, Dallas, and the Northeast Coast. Our grow markets are Central Valley and Northern California. And the markets that we really want to make sure we're protecting and keeping our market share is Southern California. And we could see all the direct correlations and actual spend data in our communities for all of these markets. This is another Port Waenimi beach picture right here. So the overarching strategy for our outreach efforts, again, data-driven decisions. Um, that's why a lot of the creative you'll see is derived from those data points that we get from our research. Persona-based targeting, so our destination is not one size fits all. Again, based on the data, we understand what people are looking for. So we'll craft and deliver messages to those audiences based on the content that they're looking to consume. Um, and we target geographies, as we just mentioned, in our key target areas. And we measure everything and we optimize to the best performing assets possible. Our current focus, as I mentioned, we're in our COVID um, marketing plan as, as we speak right now. And it's very heavily road trip-inspired content. And as I mentioned, we work down the funnel with Visit California. So if you haven't seen them already, Visit California is pushing out a huge in-state marketing campaign where they're inspiring people to take road trips and stay local right here in California. So we're working right under their funnel, hand in hand um, with the state. And again, we're leveraging the Visit California um, messaging, especially when it comes to road trips. So our recovery plan has three phases. Simply put, we're still in phase one, which is exclusively focused on the California drive market. Things seem to be loosening up um, pretty steadily. So when it's safe, um, we're going to be rolling out our campaigns back to the western re- region drive markets, which includes Arizona, Nevada. And then I'm really excited to go back to the full market plan, targeting all of those markets that we just mentioned a minute ago. Some very exciting news came out last week. Governor Newsom is planning to provide Visit California one-time stimulus funding of $95 million. So if Visit California is getting this one-time stimulus, they're marketing the destination. And again, we're right under them. So this is huge news for the industry as well as all the local businesses that depend on travel and tourism. And we're going to be right there, working hand in hand with the state, making, if this passes, to make sure that we're reaping the benefits of, of this one-time stimulus, which is a significant amount of fun to rebound the economy. Standard marketing mix, we have our marketing budget from the bot, we have our own, all of our own channels from the website to social, so on and so forth, and all of the earned media. And again, it's all concentrated with targeted, strategically deployed content to those individuals we're trying to inspire. Speaking of those individuals we're trying to inspire, um, again, based on data, we put together three different audiences that we go after. One is the outdoor lover. Simply put, this sort of individual looks for beach and water activities, hiking, biking, and outdoor events. Secondly, we go for that good vibe seeker who looks for events, which is perfect for the Waenimi uh, Beach Festival coming up. So they specifically look for events, shopping, good food, wine, beer, beach time, arts, and culture. And finally, we have a great family market, as you all know. Um, family looks for outdoor experiences, kid-friendly activities, shopping, and family-friendly restaurants. So based on the individual we're going after, we provide content that's relevant to their travel patterns and what they would be liking. And as we drill down a little bit further on our website, VenturaCountyCoast.com, we built out, because we have specific Port Waenimi campaigns going as we speak. They're performing amazing. And we needed somewhere to direct them to. So we have a one pager on our website, and this is what the homepage looks like on it. And I'll just go through a couple of slides here. And again, back to the beach, our hook for this is stay beachside with us. I mean, you can stay in Port Waenimi and walk right to those beautiful beaches. Um, pretty amazing opportunity that we all have to capitalize on. And just here's, uh, I just put together a few different snapshots of what is on that page. Again, we have the Waenimi Beach Festival right there at the very top. And we hand off to the festival organizers, so individuals could get all the latest and greatest information. We talk about the beautiful coastline, obviously, the history, the food. Um, so very high level. And then we'll hand off to the city, your actual city website for specific resources. And/or, again, I mentioned, um, the CB Museum in this case for discovery history. And the Beach Festival will hand off to those individuals. And obviously, we have the accommodations on that page as well. And we're in the process of almost finalizing an inspiration guide that we use when we're out on the road or for people to download. Um, and we, the, the website, you could get directly to that Port Waenimi page by going to discoverportwainimi.com. So all the ads that we roll out to those different target markets, that's what they're seeing and we're driving them to that, that one page. And here's uh, inspiration guide. Again, we're uh, in the process of getting, going through one last round of edits and getting these printed here um, any day now. In addition, I'm not sure if any of you've seen or heard about our trade show experience. But for our region, one of the things that we do is take our trade show experience all over the country to help communicate and inspire individuals to think Port Waenimi and Ventura County Coast when they're booking their travel plans. In fact, if you look, I just missed, um, when I was prepping for this, right under the Ventura County Coast sign, that's a shot of Port Waenimi. And that's actually an old version of the Port Waenimi guide. So we're always representing the city of Port Waenimi and the destination. It's one of the great assets that we have to talk about. In fact, our background picture, where you can see the Channel Islands in the background, that was shot from the beaches in Port Waenimi as well. Also, um. Know it or not, uh, we're always representing your city and your destination. And if you were interested, shows, so actually this month, here in a few days, Las Vegas will be our first show. We have some travel adventure shows in Dallas. And San Francisco as well as Colorado. So you know, you're going to be totally represented by us and our team um, out at these events as they come up. And I, I might mention, we have one of the most inspirational, um, robust trade show programs in the entire industry. Um, so we really try to go paint a picture for those consumers to what it's like, what it's, what it would be like to visit Ventura County Coast. And again, we have a first-class um, team as well as trade show experience that you're being represented in. And I'm not sure if you all attended uh, Dallas Cowboys Training Camp, you know, it's in our backyard in Oxnard. We play a major role, or at least we did in 2019, and we will as things continue to unfold. But we stepped in in 2019 to provide a better fan experience. And if you look really closely at that surfboard, Port Waenimi is all over that surfboard. As well as if you actually went to training camp um, in 2019, you would have seen Port Waenimi represented thousands of times as it was part of our overall branding um, onsite at that location. And this is a surfboard that Jerry Jones has over at the Star, um, one of a kind. And again, Port Waenimi is definitely represented all throughout uh, this one-of-a-kind, one-of-a-kind board. And just to quickly wrap up, drilling down a little bit further, I said I'll give you some specific Port Waenimi information. So as I mentioned, we have a very robust research program. We like to know what's happening here. So I just extracted a recent report for Port Waenimi domestic visitors. Where are they coming from? I mentioned our protect market is Southern California, so we don't want to lose market share. So we're protecting that as we go after additional markets. And you can see why. So Los Angeles by far is at the, Los Angeles Riverside, Orange County, that's Southern California market by far to Port Waenimi specifically is outperforming every other market. And then we're looking at Santa Barbara, San Diego, Bakersfield, and so on and so forth. So we not only have domestic data, we also have international data. And here's a slide um, for international spending I just pulled. And you're looking at your markets in Port Waenimi when it comes to spending and visitation. Mexico, Canada, Germany, Japan, and Australia are your top markets. And that's similar um, for our other cities as well. And I have all these reports. This is just a snap. And I have all these reports. This is just a snapshot. I've got full decks that, they're open source. If you all would like to use them, I'm more than happy to provide all this information. In fact, on our website, this, this website right here, VenturaCountyCoast.com/industry, we've compiled the latest research I have my hands on with regional data, state data, industry research. And as soon as I get it, I put it in the folder, so you can always go back to this one page and have access to all the information that I have. In addition, please feel free to reach out to me directly and personally anytime. Something else that's also very interesting on this page, I tried in this particular presentation to use basically all shots taken from your destination in Port Wainimi. You have access to all of the pictures from this presentation, as well as 100 other pictures, as well as B-roll video on this page. Open source that you all can use on your own city website. Any local businesses in Port Wainimi that need photos of happenings in Port Wainimi. You can find all beautiful, high-resolution photos on this website as well, as well as B-roll clips, available for any of you all to use. With that, I know you have a full agenda. I really appreciate you allowing me the time to speak with all of you this evening. And with that, that concludes my comments. Thank you so much.
Brian, thank you so much. And I think we all understand your vibe, and I really think you have one of the coolest jobs around. Really appreciate the work that you do in promoting the county. One, Councilmember Perez has a question, and we'll go in order, then after Councilmember Perez, Hernandez, and then Mayor Pro Tem Rollins. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Tucker. And I think you are in the perfect industry to answer this question. It's a multi-part question. What do you think of the city changing their name to, for instance, a Port, a Wainimi Beach? Do you feel the name change would increase our visibility and bring in revenue? And the other part of that is, what other, aside from that, what other areas would you recommend that we look into in order to increase our visibility?
The Wainimi Beach question. I, I could speak to the research I have. I'm going to take out my personal opinion. Based on research, we lead with beach because that's what the data tells us. It's a beautiful beach in, in California. I grew up in Southern California beach like that. That's just so amazing. So based on data, the data says beach is extremely valuable. And I took part of your, one of the individuals that took part in some of that feedback with regard to name changing and driving visitation and things like that. I, I love the beach. And what you're doing with the Wainimi Beach Festival and being open arms to events that drive visitation from out of the market into the market to stay at our hotels. You could see what the numbers are. That $600 spend versus it was 230 if they're staying in a hotel versus not. If, if you create an experience and be open arms to be a streamlined process for promoters and events to come in and be welcoming. Having an event on a beach in California, very, very rare. Live music festivals, that we had five to 35,000 people at any given time. And we used to have to go beg for some, if we could change the narrative to be open arms, like you're doing with the Wainimi Beach Festival, that will inject and infuse a tremendous amount of, not only awareness, that's why we're heavily involved with the Dallas Cowboys, but to brand that US City Council and the residents are going for. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Brian. I think your connection's getting a little shaky, so if you're moving around, maybe you could go back to that original spot, because it was pretty good. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Gama, and thank you, Mr. Tucker, for your presentation. It's very encouraging to know that we are exceeding the national level in terms of our, our tourism and that we are looking at recovering much, much faster. I'm curious, first of all, I'd like a copy of your presentation. I was busy here taking notes, and it would have been really helpful to have your presentation. So if we could get a copy of that, those, the, the data and the numbers that you have are, would be very helpful as we talk to our constituents and our community members. But the question I have regarding Governor Newsom's budget, the $95 million, should it get approved? What might that look like at our level at Port Wainimi City? What, how would that be manifested at our level?
So Visit California, as you all know, tries to drive inspiration. I'm sorry, my internet connection is not, not the best. If you can't hear me, I'm, I'm happy to connect with you offline on this, but.
We can hear you.
Any dollars that the state and Visit California? Okay, any, any dollars that the state could put out there to market our destination benefits us in, in one form or fashion? I mean, we're competing against every other state. Florida overtook us in terms of visitation. Nobody in our industry likes that, but we've been locked down for so long. So those funds go to bring back that market share. So as Visit California is pushing out messaging to get people to think California, we're right under them saying, hey, when you're thinking California, think Port Wainimi and think Ventura County Coast when booking those travel plans. That's why it's extremely important for us to be at the table, working with Visit California, to make sure we don't, we don't have $95 million. We're not even close to that. So we, we do everything we can to, to leverage what the industry is doing to get the glow effect to benefit all of our businesses and stakeholders. And again, if you haven't already, you'll start to see several Visit California commercials coming out as we speak.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I noticed in particular, you did mention one of the key features of Port Wainimi, and that's cannabis. Is there a, is there a reason behind that? Or is there a plus or minus when it comes to cannabis and tourism?
We have not gotten into marketing the cannabis angle with our Board of Directors at this point. So I, I don't have any, I can't provide any comments to that one.
Okay, might be something you look at.
Positive or negative.
Yeah, it might be something that you consider. You know, we have this, this conceptual idea of an area of our city, Channel Islands Boulevard, being the Green Mile. That could be something we could develop. But I, I'm, I'd be interested to see where your, where Visit California stands on that.
Yeah, that, right now, they're kind of in a neutral stance. When it comes to the industry as a whole, there are pockets that are starting to pop up and conversations are happening. I could tell you that.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tucker, for the presentation. I had a few questions. Within Ventura County, how does Port Wainimi match up as far as tourism right now? Are we, are we the number one? Are we the number 10? Where do we stand?
With regard to the four cities that we represent, when it comes to visitation and spend, just because of the sheer size of your destination, you would be number four out of the four I represent. But you're doing very, very well for the, the size of the destination. It'll, it goes, just for your information, it goes Ventura, Oxnard, Camarillo, Port Wainimi when it comes to revenue, based on the data and research that we obtained. Really great for the size of the destination. I'm really proud of the performance. And it could only go up from there, in my opinion.
And as a follow-up to that, if the council and the community were interested in increasing tourism to get a higher percentage or increase, you mentioned a variety of different factors right now. Are there resources to kind of identify how we in particular could improve our tourism? What things maybe we have shortfalls in right now? Or what things that we have that we need to enhance even better? And how would we go about doing that?
Totally. I think the planning process that the team is undergoing as we speak is crucial. Again, back to the special events, special events infuse communities in need periods with visitation, and that those visitors stay in our hotels and spend money at our local businesses. In addition, sports are huge. We work with a lot of tournaments that bring, you know, groups into our communities for multiple days for various tournaments. So when it comes to infrastructure and planning and looking at the beaches and the, the parks and the great area that we have in Port Wainimi, sports is something to consider. We don't have enough fields in Ventura County, unfortunately. We lose business all the time just because we don't have fields at the top of the list. In fact, two years ago, we conducted a demand driver feasibility study, which I'm happy to share with everybody again. And the two things that came out of it were a sports complex and like an amphitheater, someplace to have concerts. And you have one of the most pristine, beautiful amphitheaters right there on the beach, anywhere in the country. So if there's a way to leverage that, what you're doing, we just met with Chief Salinas and Steve Kenny and Ruben Franco with Holiday and Express last week about the Beach Festival, which, I mean, from a special event owner, operator, producer, I think that's a key metric to, to capitalizing on that. And sports and just, you know, more marketing, which we're doing on your behalf already. So you have a lot of opportunities. Really exciting destination.
So what, some of the things that the council has put into the capital improvement are enhancing their sport facilities, their tennis facilities, their beach volleyball facilities. So you're recommending that that's a good move as far as encouraging people to come to our city?
Hundred percent. Soccer is really, really important. Having enough fields for, for soccer tournaments, that, that's, that definitely drives demand as well when considering things like that.
And do you feel that we have, and this would be a question maybe you'd have to look into, do you feel that we have enough quality hotels right now that we bring people in, that they would stay? What is our current occupancy rate for our different hotels, I guess? And do we have enough quality hotels if we were to provide those various different events where they might stay in Port Wainimi as opposed to the other three cities that you deal with?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we want to, especially, we're really curious to see what's going to happen with the Wainimi Beach Festival. Hey, I want to work a little bit closer with the, the city and the event promoters, so we could really quantify the demand that I, again, right now, we're looking at 73% occupancy. And that's a roller with all four of our communities, but that's on average kind of where we're, we're at right now. So I think as demand increases, more rooms would potentially be needed. But right now, we're, the supply and demand, we're, we're doing pretty well with it as we speak. But we're going to have another thousand rooms coming online throughout our four cities in the next year or two as well. So we're constantly tasked with driving the man, which creates the opportunity for new development and renovations within our, our current inventory.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez, do you have any questions or comments?
My pleasure.
No, no questions. Thank you, Brian, for the presentation. I thought this was very educational.
Yes.
My pleasure. Yeah, I, I'm so blessed. I love what I do. I've been doing this for over 20 years. And this, this is more of a lifestyle for me. I couldn't imagine doing anything else. So it, it's truly the honor of my life to represent all of our hotels and your great destination in Port Wainimi. So if there's anything I could do to help advance what you all are doing, please, please contact me anytime.
Thank you, Brian. One of the things that is interesting about our area is the bird, birders, as they call them, and I, I run into birders all the time on Wainimi Beach, and they come from far away. And on that matter, just this weekend, I, for the first time, saw an American avocet. And I saw these birds that I've never seen before, and some Autobahn volunteers were on the beach, and they were able to quickly identify the bird and tell me what it was. So it was really cool. I wish I could share that picture with you. But is there a way for the residents of our city to forward beautiful photographs of our area?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I would encourage you to, if you post hashtag, hashtag VCC vibes would be our overall hashtag. And you could even throw in hashtag discover Port Wainimi, and then we'll know immediately. And a lot of times we'll reshare those as well.
Okay, so let me make sure I got that correct. Hashtag V C C?
Vibes.
Vibes, okay. And, and any Facebook or Instagram post with that, if we put that hashtag then?
Yeah, across the board.
Okay, awesome. Be ready to be seeing some photos.
As well as, yeah, and as well as, definitely, look for, discover Port Wainimi. That would be one that would really rise to the top.
I'm sorry, you cut out there a second. You said two hashtags, and, and I think you said the, the Wainimi one would be better?
Yeah. Right, this right here, discover, discover Port Wainimi.
And that's a hashtag, hashtag.
And then my team will, my team will see it. Yeah, yeah. Hashtag discover Port Wainimi. And then we would, we would see it. We're watching our stuff like that.
All right. Well, thank you very much. If there aren't any other questions or comments, we're going to move on to our next presentation. Okay, hearing none? Thank you. We really appreciate your vibe. Moving on to our second presentation of tonight, we're going to hear from Kristen DeKes and Port Staff, and they're going to make a presentation on noise and air quality.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Let me, Giles and Miguel, you can go ahead and put your cameras on.
You're flying.
Looks like, look at the beautiful city, beautiful beach, right? I'm sharing this all over the, all over the place. Been testimony in Congress, got to see this photograph, so good stuff. All right, let me share our content here. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay, super. So thank you for your time this evening. We just wanted to come out and give you a quick port update. And then there's been a couple of questions about noise and air. And we've done a lot of monitoring, have a lot of good data to share with you this evening. And thought, Miguel will talk to you a little bit about the noise monitoring and some other community work we're doing. Then Giles will give you an update on air quality data collection that we've collected over the last year. So we have a really good set of data to really inform the conversation and tell you where we're at in terms of certain community questions. So just to kick things off here, just remind you, we celebrated our fifth birth, our fifth birthday. On May 5th, we celebrated our 84th birthday, Cinco de Mayo. So we're 84 years now as an oldest support of Wainimi. My board just sends its regards, and, and thank you for your leadership. And then we look forward to working with you on the Community Benefit Fund. I know we're trying to book a joint meeting for that. And I think we made a lot of progress in our last Government Relations Port City meeting. So we look forward to getting together as a joint board and having a robust conversation around opportunities to invest in our community. Just real quick, just thought I would share with you how the port's performing in light of the COVID pandemic. You know, a year ago, if you ask me, we were actually going to be scaling back our budget 30%, thinking that they were going to stop manufacturing cars altogether, and we were going to have a real hit on our bottom line. The good news is that the port continued to perform quite well this fiscal year. In fact, we're going to have a milestone year. It seems that the market share for automobiles and fruit has. It seems that the market share for automobiles and fruit has remained very strong. Good story to tell. As many people have suffered in the plight of COVID-19 and we were able to keep good paying family jobs going here through trade at the port. So good story. We'll have our best year in history this fiscal year despite the woes of COVID. What does that translate in terms of revenue for the city? Our port cargo has grown 20% since 2012 and city revenue, revenue from that growth is upwards of almost 90%. So when we do well, it's very clear that the revenue stream going into the, the city is very strong. And this just kind of tells a different story. You can look at the numbers. But this year, next fiscal year, we're anticipating a $1.9 million contribution to the general fund budget through port growth and activity that's happened. So it's just, you know, it's a real nice synergy symbiotic relationship that we have here and look forward to continuing to work with you to grow opportunities in terms of trade as well as look at ways that we continue to do that in a green and sustainable way. That's very sensitive to the stakeholders here in our community. But often questions come up around the dredging. I'm pleased to report today they did the checkmark. So I think that the dredging project is complete. We were able to deposit 126,000 cubic yards of sand directly on the beach and then 264 in the near shore environment. And you'll see that they'll start packing their bags, fencing will go away and the beach will, the parmanad will be open to the end in relatively short order as they're packing things up. So please, that project is complete. And happy to answer any questions at the end of this and any of those graphs and numbers that I had. And I'm just going to turn it over to Miguel now to talk about the community and the noise monitoring we've done. And you can see this is a wonderful picture of the benefits of dredging and how important it is clearly to the stability of the port and the beaches along Port Huaynimi in terms of how, how critical that dredging is. Oh, I have one more slide, forgive me. We are in the midst of updating our strategic plan. We had a wonderful charrette with the community. We had 90 people participate. We had the delivered in three languages, misteco, Spanish and English. And we're continuing to take all that feedback ingested or infuse it into our strategic plan. And then we'll have a draft strategic plan that will go out to public comment for at least a month relatively soon. So we're excited to see our strategic plan start getting legs and hopefully we'll have it done in a couple of months here. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Miguel to talk a little bit about the community and the work we're doing here and our noise monitoring. Go ahead, Miguel.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor, Staff Members, City Manager. You know, one of the first things that I'd like to highlight is the fact that we are Huaynimi at the port. And, you know, we've been at our, in our department, right, which was created about a year and six months ago. And one of the first things that we wanted to do was create a presence in the city of Huaynimi. And we thought that one of the best ways to do this was to sponsor our classes through the Huaynimi Elementary School District. Unfortunately, COVID hit later and classes were canceled. However, you know, the port has been in the front lines, addressing some of the needs for testing, right? We've held a couple of testing sites at first as well as vaccination clinic, which occurred approximately one month ago. And also we've collaborated with the Huaynimi City Council on food distribution that occurred at Volker Park as well as hosting Mayor Gama for the, our global trade and logistics and risk assessment management class. As well as supporting the NAMI Walk through some shirts. And in the course of the pandemic, we've distributed 1 million pounds of food countywide. And our customer, Del Monte, has donated 6 million pounds of food for different organizations. One of the things that I omitted was the car show that occurred. I saw Councilman Rollins with an amazing vehicle. So, you know, congratulations on that. Next slide, please. And so now I'm going to talk a little bit about the noise monitoring that occurred here at the port and in the community. So summary of that is there were some resident initiated concerns. We took the liberty of investigating and identified some noise monitoring locations throughout the port and also out in the community. As you will be able to see in the results, no incidences of the city ordinance were measured. Next slide, please. And if you're wondering where the locations are, these are the three locations. One is at the end of what we call Reefer Row, which is directly in the heart of our port container operations. The second one was actually right outside our gate between Pearl and I believe that Surfside. And then the third one was actually in, near the vicinity of some of the interested parties for some of these measurements. And so the way that this was contacted or conducted actually was this monitoring occurred on the night of March 31st from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM in those three locations. And every sound was recorded, everything from barking dogs to ambulances, to vehicles, to music from local folks. After the sounds were recorded, they were taken to an industrial hygienist firm out of the United Kingdom who did quality assurance and quality control. And as a result of that, as you can see, out of the three incidents that were logged, none of them actually exceeded the noise ordinance. All right. And so there's that piece. Do you have any questions or can we move on to our next piece?
I have one question. What is the, and I probably should know this, but what is the maximum noise level D B A?
It's 50 decibels.
50 decibels and this right here, 68.2.
Yeah, that was actually the inside the port at Reefer Row. And that was at the heart of our operation. So it was bound to have the higher amount.
So if we exceed the, I'm sorry, if we, so the measuring not to exceed is outside the walls of the port?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
One, one note too, which unfortunately I think a slide fell off here, but we have been doing other measures to ensure that we try and keep the port as quiet as possible. One thing that we've recently done is we have our harbor masters who are on shift 24/7 go out at night when we're running container operations. And they drive into the community, they've been logging whether or not they hear noise or not. To date, from an anecdotal, non decimal experience, but just from the human ear, they are not hearing noise at night in the areas where we've heard some challenges from the community. So we're going out every night that we have operations going and logging that data. We're also handing out information to truck drivers at the gate to make sure that they slow down and move slowly through the community so that you don't hear the trucks as noisy. If they go real fast, it's possible they hit a speed bump and the container could make a noise. So we're made a major campaign to slow down our truck drivers so that that wouldn't be a cause of noise. And so we will keep up in this monitoring practice to make sure that there isn't a noise issue with port operations.
Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our air quality monitoring. And we have a station located at Art Hickox Elementary, 1.7 miles east of Port Huaynimi. And as of right now, we have approximately a year and four months of air monitoring data. Next slide, please. And why the air quality focus? Well, there were some concerns being raised by some community members regarding some of the Calen viral screen modeling results. The Calen viral screen is a website that tabulates different indicators such as diesel emissions, poverty level, education level, and then gives a percentage that is then calculated into a measurement level for what they would call pollution, right? And so these calculations were brought up as part of concerns. And the port leadership decided that it would be great if we could identify some data which was very specific to the neighborhoods surrounding the port so that we can verify it and also figure out how we can, you know, better reach some of the goals that we have towards not only engaging the community meaningfully, but also delivering some quality data. So next slide, please. So I'll let Giles introduce the monitoring station.
All right, great. I'm here, everybody. It's not letting me turn my camera on, so you guys can't see me, but I am here. What I'm going to talk about this evening is our air quality monitoring. So as many of you are in the area know, you know, there's tremendous amount of interest as far as air quality goes. There you go. Oh, now everyone can see me. Great to see all of you. And what we determined was that the port felt as though we wanted to not just, you know, measure the air quality in the local community. We wanted to do so in a way that would enable us to share that information directly with the community and use it as a tool for really fostering conversations with the community about what the air quality they're breathing actually looks like. As, as Miguel mentioned, Calen virus screen is a widely, widely used tool. But it's based upon models that are modeling estimations of pollutant loading and other elements associated with total kind of, kind of environmental health for a community. What we wanted to do was say, let's go out there and actually measure the air that people are breathing day in, day out. The real numbers of what actually is there in the community. So this setup that you see, oh, can we go, this setup that you see here, this is a top on the roof of Hickox Elementary there, just north of Huaynimi Road on Perkins. And what we are measuring is really specific to port operations, potential impacts on air quality and things that drive negative health outcomes like particulate matter. So in that, that little thing looks a little bit like R2D2 or like a mini fridge there on the lower right hand side. That is a locked cabinet that in it contains these two monitors you can see in the bottom of that picture. The black one that looks kind of like a mini fridge, or excuse me, a microwave. And then that blue and gray one there, those are both what are called reference grade monitors. So these are EPA equivalent monitoring devices. They take measurements that are so fine and accurate, they would stand up in a court of law and be blessed by an organization like the EPA saying, yes, this is real valid scientific data. They are in that machine there, they're in that output. But then we have to talk about what it is that we're monitoring. We're really focused on particulate matter. Particulate matter is basically soot or dust or mold or fungus or tiny particles of, of sand. What this image here on your left is showing you is a zoomed in image of a human hair. So imagine a single human hair. Now what we're looking for are these different sort of grades of particulate matter. P M 10 being the largest. So that's again, things like dust or mold or pollen. And then P M 2.5, four times smaller, these little pink dots you can see there in relation to that P M 10 particle. And then even smaller diesel particulate matter, which is a byproduct of the combustion of stuff like diesel fuel, is again smaller than a micron. So another half size, I mean, we are talking about microscopic little tiny things. And the reason these are important is because diesel particulate matter can enter the body, can go through your lungs, can go into your organs, can go into the brain, can pass the placental barrier. You know, it has the capability to drive negative health comes, health outcomes, excuse me. Let's keep going. The challenge becomes though, that you can't measure for black, excuse me, you can't measure for diesel particulate matter by itself. It's a mix of those combustion products, it's gases, it's particles. So what they have found is that there's a much easier to measure metric called black carbon. And essentially what it is, is it's, it's another type of tiny particle. And what it comes from is basically two things. It comes from the burning of fossil fuels and it comes from the burning of basically biomass. So firewood, coal, our hillsides when there's a wildfire. That monitor that we put in has the ability to differentiate between a fossil fuel source and between a biomass source. And it can tell you what your numbers are coming from. Is it a fossil fuel issue or is it a biomass issue? Is it wood smoke basically? Next slide, please. So black carbon has now become a very accepted surrogate measure for diesel particulate. And that's important, again, coming back to wanting to measure these little tiny particles and understand what their true prevalence because air quality is complicated. We're going to get into some atmospheric science in a few minutes. But it's really about long-term exposure. That's where negative health outcomes come from is long-term exposure to bad quality air. What you see on this graph right here, the real takeaway message here, that black line that's slowly dipping to the, to the lower quarter toward 2015, that is amount of black carbon being produced in California. At the same time, that green line is the amount of diesel consumption. So essentially what this is telling you is that while the use of diesel has really increased in the last 60 years, the amount of pollution made by that diesel has decreased because the quality of the fuel has gotten better. In part because of a lot of rules that the state has put in place. So now let's talk about the port. Let's talk about direct measurement of air quality from the port. This is an emissions inventory showing that those fuel rules we just talked about, which changed the quality of air all over the state is directly impacting air quality here in our own community. These are O G V means ocean going vessel. So these are emissions from ships coming to the port. And these different acronyms you see here, SOX, P M, D P M and NOX. Those are different pollutants. And as you can see, while cargo growth has increased more than 25% since 2008, in that same time period, these numbers have decreased. Diesel particulate, this is probably the most important one here, has dropped by more than 85%. And that is real. That is soot on people's driveways, on their cars in the morning, on their patio furniture, when they're outside jogging, when they're outside playing at the beach. This is pollution that is no longer there because of those clean fuel rules. And then that shore power system that we are very proud of that's enabled this air quality improvement. So let's talk about air quality in Ventura County, because that's really where we're focused. Where does this black carbon come from in Ventura County? Well, there's really basically, as we said, those two kinds, right? There's fossil fuel burning and there's biomass burning. Fossil fuel gets broken up into sort of two chunks. Stuff that drives on a road like trucks, buses, trash trucks, school buses and things off of roads, ships, construction equipment, trains, airplanes, agricultural equipment, groundwater pumps. And then lastly, of course, biomass. We have, when the weather is cold, quite a few people heat their homes with wood stoves or fireplaces. But we also have a real wildfire component that we're going to talk a little bit more about because that's really important if we want to talk about long-term health. Wildfire is becoming a more and more and more important conversation in air quality in our state. And that is because climate change is driving unprecedented amounts of wildfire. As all of you know, last fall was the worst fire season in California state history. Four million plus acres were burned, almost four times more fire acreage than the next closest previous year. Now, why does that matter? Why does a whole bunch of fire matter to air quality? Well, because all of that burning smoke goes up into the atmosphere and mixes. And it does two things. It produces greenhouse gases that make climate change worse. But it also produces particulate that is pollution that makes people sick. And the reason the wildfire piece is important, as you see in this picture, are because the concentrations are so high. These days up in downtown San Francisco, last September, they were getting air quality readings that were 100 as high as 1,000 times higher than normal background air pollution readings. This is unprecedented in the state's history. What this is equivalent to is having 80 million metric tons of carbon dioxide greenhouse gas came from that fire season, a massive, massive quantity. So this just shows when there are local fires, even if there isn't one burning in Ventura County, because of the fluid nature of air, as soon as it comes up into the atmosphere, air mixes and moves and swirls. All of us were breathing in this smoke. All of us were suffering these impacts from these statewide fires. As you can see, of course, that's where we're home, right there under the yellow star there. Let's keep going. So now, here is the data. This is what we have come to see. This is what we care about. This is black carbon. These are monthly averages. But these are measured in, excuse me, are called micrograms per meter cubed. Now you might say, what is micrograms per meter cubed? Well, that is a concentration. That is an amount of something suspended in a volume. So let's say a meter cubed. What is that? That's a three foot by three foot box. And a microgram is one one thousandth of a gram. So let's take like a common green pea, weighs about a gram. To get a microgram, you have to slice it into a thousand equal parts and take one of those thousands of your pea and drop it into your three foot by three foot box. That is one microgram in a meter cubed. So here are our readings, our highest. So here are our readings. Our highest readings are only about two thirds of that thousandth of a pea. And as you can see, let's look at the numbers here. Where do we have high numbers? January and February, almost half a microgram, and then a very sudden drop off in March. Low numbers all the way until we get to August, and then numbers going up, up, up through the fall, all the way into December. And the reason is that those numbers went up like that in the fall is wildfire. Consistent, strong background sources of that atmospheric movement of all that smoke all the time. So let's keep going. So now let's get into the data a little bit. This is the kind of fun, cool, scientific part of this because we have to understand how air in our community moves. So this is a really important part of this is understanding wind. Because wind is a really, really critical part of understanding air quality. Air moves. I mean, that's a no brainer, but it makes a massive impact on what the quality of the air that we breathe looks like. If we think about it, in Ventura County, the amount of pollution that gets made by the trucks, the buses, the trash trucks, the factories, all of that stuff is constant. It's very consistent. Day after day, week after week, month after month, the same amount of pollution gets produced in our community. It's the air that it gets diluted into and where the wind pushes it that makes the difference. So why we have a turkey here on this slide is because of its beautiful feathers. Those weird looking, kind of turkey feather looking things to the right of that are wind roses. Those are diagrams telling you about the wind. They tell you if you see a long turkey feather that you had a lot of wind coming from that direction. So that turkey feather on the left, we can see the longest feathers going straight up to the north. But the color shows us that black is the mildest, lightest winds. Blue are the strongest winds, red are the next strongest followed by yellow, black is very calm winds. So the, on the left there, the way you would read that, you would understand there were strong, excuse me, there were consistent north winds, but they were light. Whereas over here on the right, you see westerly winds, strong westerly winds, all that red and yellow, and they're long, so that means there was a lot of them. This is going to tell us about how air is moving in our community. All right, next slide. So again, here are those averages, once again, where we see those high numbers, December, January, February, almost twice as high as the following years in the spring. And look at those wind roses, look at those turkey feathers. Long, pointing upward, black feathers. So that means consistent northerly winds that are very mild. So wind blowing down from one oh one, blowing down from the other parts of North Oxnard and the, and Camero area, but mild wind. And then in March, we see a change. We see this westerly wind kicking in. And then look at April. Really, really strong westerly winds. That north wind is gone almost completely. And then you have consistent westerly winds, strong westerly winds, all the way into August. And what that's doing is that is blowing a lot of that pollution out and bringing in clean ocean air from the west in to clean out our atmosphere locally. So that wind piece, that topography piece, that element of being part of a broader air basin means that it dictates the quality of air that we're breathing. And again, these are actual numbers. This is from the machine taking a reading every second, every day since last December. So here is that air basin. This is this great, see that sort of cloudy layer that you can see in there? That is the Ventura County air basin. And as you can see, it is basically smushed in by hills. So our air basin mixes and swirls as it is sort of kept in by the hills that surround us, the foothills. So when we talk about air circulation and air function, it's really a function, really a result of that topography plus our local winds. This is really important to understanding what our air is looking like. But you can see where we are. See the monitor right down there where it says P O H station, sticking out to the west, right out over the ocean, those westerly winds blowing that clean air in for us. When we get northerly wind, all that additional onshore, you know, one oh one pollution, et cetera, coming down. So now let's talk quickly about why is the air worse in December and January? And the answer is the atmosphere and cold. So we were talking about that volume of air changing, but the amount of pollution that's inside of it is really consistent, the same amount of pollution day in, day out. And as you can see in this photograph, maybe some of you have heard of an inversion layer. When we get in, they'll, they'll talk about it. An inversion layer means when you have different layers of air, like a layered cake, that are separated by temperature. And when you get cold air, very dense, trapped down close to the surface, what it does is you don't get any of that mixing. So all of that pollution that previously had lots of room to swirl and move about and dilute is now smushed down into this very small, small layer. So if you want to breathe bad air quality in our community, you go outside at two in the morning on the coldest night of January, when that layer is going to be really small, you're going to breathe in probably the worst quality air of the year, aside from if there's a wildfire. So let's go to the next slide. So why is this? Well, let's, let's take an analogy comparing to like instant coffee, for instance, or hot cocoa. If you take a cup of water and you put one scoop in, you get consistent concentration. But if you put half as much water and you put that same scoop into it, your coffee is going to be twice as strong. So that is the same thing that's happening in our air quality in the winter. We have less volume to dilute all of that pollution. So the air quality is a lot worse in the, in the cold, cold times of winter. So these are those results again. These are coming from, you know, January through December, the full year there. And those numbers increasing there on that right hand side, again, these are black carbon. So this is that surrogate for diesel particulate matter. This is all being mixed. And again, we are seeing that wildfire influence, wildfire influence very strongly there. All right. So as I was saying at the beginning, these, these monitors are really, really cutting edge technology. There are very, very few places in the country that have black carbon monitors. We are really fortunate to have one of these monitors in our community because there's maybe four or five places in the whole country that have these things. One of the locations that does is the Port of Los Angeles and the surrounding community in Long Beach. This slide just gives you a general look at what their air quality looks like compared to ours. And you can see that red line, again, concentrations, micrograms per meter cubed, over time, their numbers in Los Angeles are the red, Wynimi and blue, consistently fifty to seventy percent higher than Wynimi numbers. Just to give us some context. Now let's look at some of these actual data. And here's another, another sort of thing where I've got to ask you to put on your thinking caps and look into this data a little bit. Again, down here in the middle, we're looking at December of twenty nineteen. There's our familiar tricky feather right there in the middle. What these dots that you see there are, are concentration plots. There are seven hundred and twenty hours in a month. These are one, excuse me, seven hundred and twenty hours in a month. So each of these dots represents one hour. So a bunch of seconds averaged up to a minute, averaged up to an hour. The pink dots are higher concentrations of air pollution. And where they are in comparison to the crosshairs shows you where the wind was blowing from. So when there are dots, pink dots to the north, that means air pollution with the worst quality air is coming in from the north. You can see from the west and the south, we have no pink dots, even when there's ships in port. When there's no ships in port, it doesn't make any difference. The pollution is coming in with those light winds from the north in the cold times of the winter. Next month, January, same trend. Lots and lots of clean, clean air, blue dots, a few yellow, a couple pink. Again, coming from the north, most of that pollution coming down from the north. Next month. Again, same thing. Next month. Again, same thing, lots of blue. Let's go to April. Same thing. Now we can start to see a component of those westerly winds coming in. We get a couple readings over there that are above one, coming from the west. Next one? Ah, okay, I guess that's the end there. So essentially, what we have here is we have a story that this data is telling us. That air quality around all of South Oxnard, around Port Wynimi, around Ormond is really driven by two things. Seasonal change and wildfire. And wildfire is going to play the most important part as far as community health risk in our future. It adds that urgency to this need to address climate change because this is a reaction of our entire area to climate change. So let's talk a little bit about these conclusions and goals for the port. Now we have something really important to tell all of you related to some of our objectives around zero emissions operations at the port. We hear that loud and clear from the community. When can the port get to zero emission? When can the port get to zero emission? And what I've always said to the community is, I don't know. I don't yet know. And I'm not going to give you a date until we can solidly show you how we can achieve that date. We need a plan. We need numbers. We need to do our homework to be able to show you that situation. And last month, we found out that we are getting funds from the Energy Commission to basically do exactly that. We are going to be doing a zero emission scenario study to look at all the operations on port, look at future scenarios, look at those fuels that we use to do cargo movement, and then figure out how much and how long it would take to get those to zero emission. I'm really excited about this thing because it will give us those timelines, those dates, those deadlines. And there's a really, really big community element in that. About a hundred thousand dollars of that grant are going to go directly toward community involvement in that process. So that is a really exciting upcoming effort that we're going to be doing. We're going to be talking with the community about things like hydrogen fuel cells, battery storage, onsite generation, micro grids, ammonia, all kinds of future energy planning. So that is really exciting. At the same time, we're working on this transition of all of our equipment. We're putting in literally today, S C E was on the port installing plugs to power port tractors with electrical power. The first iteration of full size, heavy duty cargo handling equipment on port. That's a really exciting transitional step. We are working to, there's, as all of you know, there's federal money, there's state money coming out from these things. We put in for an infra grant recently. We wanted to, to do some career development work with Oxnard College in there. So in working with them, they have an alternatives fuel program that we put in a bunch of money for to try and get additional curriculum. We want to ensure that the community is brought with us on this. We want to get those kids, those young people that Mayor Gama was talking about at the beginning, that they have opportunities through this fuel transition, that they get exposed to this technology, that they get exposed to these opportunities and jobs in the future for green energy management, clean technology, offshore wind, micro grids, all of this stuff that's going to be changing our world in the next ten years. We want to ensure that we bring all of this to the community through the port. And that is, that's our, just our outside analysts who we work with very closely on these air quality programs, who is a air quality PhD, you know, climate scientist, basically. So we weren't doing this all on our own. We'd love to give him credit and point to the fact that we've got a very solid support team outside of the port, but very happy to ask questions. This was a very high level sort of skim off the top of this information. There's a tremendous amount more here to sink our teeth into if any of you have interest. I'm always happy to talk to any of you or all of you about this. This is what I do all day. Look forward to having those conversations. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. And I am so lucky because I got to hear you on Saturday talk about some of the great things you're doing with, with our volunteers at Beach Cleanup, and that was awesome. And your passion and your speaking ability to make the complex understandable is very much appreciated. And I love the turkey feathers. It's awesome. One thing I wanted to try and crack a joke is let's not, re for row is not to be confused with the cannabis industry in Port Wynimi, okay? And one question I have, and then I know my colleagues will have a question. So Giles, when you were down with us on Saturday, giving a little talk of environmental stewardship and all that, we're watching that super container go by. Now, the question I have is, a lot of the vessels that come into the port of Wynimi come from foreign countries. So how is it, is it a, what is their motivation to lessen their, their emissions? Is it dollar savings or is it international regulations?
That's a great question, Mayor Gama. Essentially, it's state law. So if they want to come here to do their shipping business, they are required by state law to make their ships capable to plug into our electrical infrastructure in the port. Now, there's, there's sort of a, that's the short answer. The longer answer is that this whole question is coming very, very front and center these days. The, the climate side and the pollution side, because remember, that's something that often gets lost in this conversation. People are thinking very much only about the climate side in frequent conversations. Carbon dioxide, methane, et cetera. We can't forget that those frontline communities that are in adjacent port areas, logistical hubs, warehouses, et cetera. Their concern right now is not climate change directly. It's more about that exposure to the pollutants that are particulate matters that are immediate public health risk. So that is the great thing about a shore power system. You get both benefits with those. But for those ocean carriers, those ships coming to places like Wynimi, if they want to bring their business here, they have to follow those rules. But the, the sort of equity of the question of where they're coming from is getting a tremendous amount more attention. And they're working on regulations in a lot of those areas. In fact, South America traditionally hasn't had extensive emission control areas, and they're working with the International Maritime Organization on actually passing some of those. There's conversations happening in China. There's conversations happening in the European Union around instigating and basically developing the same types of rules that California currently has. So we really are, you know, at the pointy, pointy end of the spear when it comes to these types of changes. But the rest of the world is very much watching and very much looking to model these kind of rules to see those similar types of emissions reductions in their communities that we're getting here.
If I may add to, the I M O does have a requirement that all ocean carriers now use a low sulfur, a low sulfur fuel, which is actually making a significant difference in our air basin. And another effort out there is called Blue Skies, Blue Whales, where they require those big vessels to slow down so they consume, consume less fuel, and then there's less pollution. It's a volunteer program, but they get a lot of recognition for it and they, a lot of our customers participate. And a lot of those vessels, Mayor, that you're speaking to that are coming up the coast would never call them Wynimi because they're too big. And they're actually more of a problem for our air basin than any vessel that comes into the, to the port of Wynimi.
Yeah, it's interesting because we could see those monster vessels.
Yeah, they're not ours.
Right. I know they're not, but I think Giles said that they can carry ten thousand containers. And so, but they're under the same rules as the vessels that come into the port of Wynimi.
When they're at birth, they have to plug in if they are refrigerated cargo ship, if they have refrigerated cargo on there, yes.
Wow, that's really interesting. Council members, do you have any questions for Giles and or Kristen? Mayor Pro Tem Rollins, I see your hand.
Yeah, yeah. First of all, thank you for such an in-depth presentation. I think it gives us a lot of information when the constituents talk to us about various different things. By providing us that education, I think we can be supportive of a lot of the different things that the port is doing. Couple of questions. I noticed that you had mentioned one of the new programs that you're doing is the idling program for the tractors that we, I guess we recently approved through the Ventura County Transportation Commission. Is that already in operation? I heard something to that effect, but not yet, or has it not started yet? Mr. Pedeport.
It has not started yet. So the, the challenge in this transition process is the, the sort of complexity of what is, what is, what has to happen in order to enable this new equipment to operate. What frequently gets lost in the conversation when we talk about this transition to zero emission equipment is the fact that we're really talking about two separate but interconnected pieces. The, the equipment gets all the attention, the trucks, the buses. That's what everybody, you know, you have the ribbon cutting, the smash the bottle of champagne on the front of it. But what is essential is the, the kind of unsexy behind the scenes stuff that enables that piece of equipment to operate. We have to remember that what we're talking about at its very heart is We have to remember that what we're talking about at its very heart is a fuel change. And the last time a fuel change happened of this scale, it was basically going from like horse-drawn carriages to motorized carriages, you know, back 140 years ago roughly. That is the scale of the transition that's going to have to happen. And what that means is that we're not just replacing and repowering all of that stuff. We have to put whole new systems of fuel storage and fuel distribution out there. That infrastructure, the plugs, the batteries, the conduit, the switchgear, the transformers. All of that infrastructure side is essential. None of this equipment will operate without it. But it takes permitting, it takes engineering, it takes CQ. It takes a whole lot of money and a whole lot of time, and it takes a utility provider. We can't do any of this stuff without Southern California Edison being arm-in-arm with us in getting us the power at the end of the pipe to basically be able to power this stuff. So one of the conversations when it comes to things like cities, you know, Oxnard is writing their Clean Air Adaptation Plan right now, their CAP. A really critical piece in that is looking at infrastructure. You know, how do we grow and facilitate our local businesses, businesses that come through the port or that are already in our community having success in this clean energy future? A big part of that conversation is infrastructure. A big part of that conversation is access to sufficient power supplies to operate this future equipment. And that is a big dollar, big time conversation. But to your question, it's a really critical piece that we have spent the last three years working on, that we are just now coming to that construction phase, literally in the last three weeks, to put those plugs in, put those transformers in. So that work should be done at the end of, well, mid-June roughly. And those tractors should be arriving, we're hoping, in the next three weeks on port. And we'll be driving around. We actually, our longshoremen have already driven them and are thrilled because they say, I can hear myself think, I don't smell like diesel exhaust. You know, it's this wonderful, it's like the Tesla of UTRs. They're thrilled to have these options. So, you know, labor being a really critical part of our everything, having them be supportive of these transitions is a really awesome step for us.
And I guess one thought, when a resident has a concern, be it valid or not valid, and needs information, is there, is there a one contact person that they can call through the port to get that information regarding pollution?
Well, we encourage the people to call the main office, 805-488-3677. And based on the nature of the concern, we can get that person in touch with the right person. If it's off-hours, we would have you call our Harbor Master Office and we can get that number out to you. So we'll make sure that the city has the right phone numbers to get, because we actually have a very rigorous outreach program. We'll answer every constituent and work with them, invite them to the port and show them and share this data, so.
Yeah, and I encourage, you know, if there is community watching this evening, I do encourage, or I do request that we ask you for patience. You know, this noise monitoring, for instance, that Miguel was outlining at the beginning of the presentation, that is incredibly data-intensive. Basically, those monitors are out there recording every frog croak, peep, car backfire, dog bark, that entire night. I mean, it's gigabytes of data. We have to send that to the United Kingdom to get QA QC to make sure that, you know, the correct frequency bands are being analyzed. And that isn't, it's not a quick process. And we want to do our due diligence to answer these questions and gather information to say, you know, verifiably that we are or are not causing a problem. We're not going to dismiss it overnight and be blasé about it, but we have to do our due diligence. And with things that are data-intensive like noise or air quality, it just takes some time, unfortunately.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gama. And thank you Giles for the presentation. I had a quick question. I wanted to know if we have access to some of those charts, the wind charts? Because the most recent one that I saw was from last August. So that's almost like eight months ago. So I just want to know, how frequently do you guys get those charts and how easily accessible are they?
That's a great question. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Our plan for this is that in this calendar year, we are going to be building a public-facing website that will allow access to the data. So you can see the air quality monitoring data to actually see what air quality is like in the community. That is very much something that we are going to be doing. That monitor setup was about $150,000. It was a pretty expensive setup for us. So this next round of funding is going toward getting that website up and running. We had to do a lot of calibration to make sure it was accurate and make sure that the data process, because obviously it's got to go from the roof at Hay Cox to a database somewhere to a computer. It's a long sort of food chain in the data there. But as far as the actual wind roses go, those, we'll have to work on getting a means of displaying those in there as well. But that's a really good point on your behalf. Because that question around wind is really critical. If you see high numbers on any monitor, the immediate question you have to ask is, well, where is it coming from? And the thing that tells you that answer is that wind direction and wind intensity. So that is a very intuitive, a very insightful question because that's the proxy of the question. So that will be part of that as we get that website up in the next couple of months.
Thanks Giles. That would be really nice to be able to see those charts. And Miguel, I also wanted to say thank you for your presentation. And a quick question for Miguel. I know we get the emails, but what's the best way to get notified for some of the events that you guys have? Because I really like your guys' events. You guys have been doing a great job. So what's the best way for the public to be notified about those events?
Yes, thank you for your question, Councilmember Martinez. We have been doing the elected bulletin that you are getting. In terms of our food distributions, depending on the location, we'll distribute flyers beforehand. We'll post on some social media. And we're creating sort of a calendar of events now that things are reopening to be able to share with everybody in the community so that we can ensure that everybody that wants to participate can participate. One of the challenges has been being able to solidify locations, you know, within a timeframe. And, you know, because it involves a lot of different logistics, right? And everything from acquiring the produce, moving it, all the way to coordinating event space and volunteers. So as, you know, as a suggestion, you know, you can always email me to find out. Most importantly, you know, direct people to, that are interested in getting involved again to me. And I'll make sure that you have my email and you have my cellphone as well.
If you can confirm you get the elected bulletin too, because that, we try and get a lot of good information out there. If you're not getting it, city council member, let us know and we'll make sure we fix that.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. And I'm sure it's also on your guys' website also, right, all the events?
Some of them are, depending on, you know, how far in advance we can solidify them. There's been times, like for example, we had a food distribution in a celery field, which, you know, took some additional steps and coordination with some of the management from the celery field and the farm workers. And so as much as we can, you know, we will update it. But there's certainly, especially in our community drive, that involves a little bit more flexibility and, you know, daily coordination. And sometimes it's a little bit difficult to run it through internally as well.
All right, thank you, Miguel. And then my last question is for Kristen. It's really nice to see you, Kristen. And I know that you guys have been doing a pretty good job about dredging the port and bringing in some sand into our beach. We still have, in my opinion, the need for more sand, excuse me, for more sand. Because there's still technically a scar on the beach. That's what, at least that's what they call it. What can we do to add more sand on the beach?
It's a great question and it's, you know, it's a challenge facing our region from the port's perspective, from the Channel Islands perspective as well as the city's perspective. And even on down all the way to now the Point Mugu Navy Base is concerned about the ecosystem and building up sand. And I think the best approach to this, I know we recently had a sand summit, but it's coalition building and working together and having a task force to go after the feds to make sure they provide the adequate funding so we can get the appropriate amount of cubic yardage each go-around in terms of our biannual dredge. And I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to, whether we head to Washington together or what it is. But, you know, there's, I think the more people we get together, more coalition building, the more successful we can be in securing more increased sand. And I see, Mayor, that you may have a suggestion as well.
Yes, what I'm looking at is over your right shoulder, you can see the sand trap. And you can see, this isn't a lack of sand issue, although it is a lack of sand at Wainimi Beach. What it is, it's a lack of funding to move that sand over your right shoulder around the corner to get to Wainimi Beach. Because what we need to do is mimic what Mother Nature used to do. And Mother Nature on its own, before the installation of the port of Wainimi, was able to move 1.2 million cubic yards of sand by its own. And so, so that's, we know what we got to get to. And we had some conversations, information about the scar with Mark Baylor with Beacon. And so we know what we have to do. There's plenty of sand, we just got to get it moved around the corner. Councilmember.
So, so real quick, so what I'm hearing is a call for us to collaborate and work together so that we can get that appropriate funding, right?
Yeah, yes, exactly. City council member, yes.
All right, thank you, Kristen. No other questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez.
Yes, thank you. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I want to thank Kristen and Giles and Miguel for their presentations. Very informative and a lot of information, and some of it was way over my head. But I do appreciate, and I got the gist of it, there's a lot of positive things happening in terms of the sound issue and the pollution issue that we're doing good things to make sure those levels are low. And Miguel, I look forward to more events that are happening in the community. I've participated in a few and I'm looking forward to more coming. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, are there, Councilmember Hernandez, you're not on the screen, let me see if I could. Do you have a question?
Yeah, well, just a comment. I just want to thank Kristen and Giles and Miguel for all the good work. And I would like a copy of Giles' presentation because it had some really good information that on occasion we might have the need to share with any of our residents. So not so sure I could interpret it all, but I know where to go to research some of those symbols and the turkey feathers and things like that. So I'd really appreciate it. And I want to also thank you for the 386,000 cubic yards of sand. You kicked us over the 2 million mark for this year. So thank you very much to the port.
We get dredged every two years, so anyways, it's complicated. But yes, and coming out of COVID, I look forward to all the youth engagement. And that we missed out over this last year. The port does a wonderful job in youth engagement. And I love participating with the youth down at the port logistics class. We love all the things that you do that focuses on education, getting the college students involved, getting the elementary students involved. And so we are a partner with you and our city council is focused on making the youth the VIP of our community. And we know that you're in the same mindset and that the youth of our community is the future of our community. And so together, we're going to make that happen. And we look forward to getting this COVID thing behind us so we can open you all back up and get kids down there. Are there any other questions or comments for our presenters tonight? Well, thank you, Port staff. Amazing information. Giles, I really enjoy your ability to take the complex and make it understandable. Miguel, I really love the fact that you're out there in the community and you're driving and distributing food and keeping us engaged with our total community. And you all are great, great partners. And we thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members, our pleasure.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Moving on to Public Works Department Quarterly Update. Don Viafana will be presenting on this matter on behalf of our staff.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. If Mr. Perez could allow me to share the screen so I can share the PowerPoint?
Don, you should have had that a little while ago. You are a co-host, so you should have that power.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening. This is the Public Works Update. And today, this week is the start of National Public Works Week. And this year's motto is "Stronger Together." And the Streets and Insuring Division, we're continuing with our pavement maintenance program. We just completed Phase Five of a multi-year pavement maintenance plan for Ventura Road. Yeah, Ventura Road is now resurfaced from Surfside to Channel Islands Boulevard. The Volker neighborhood is resurfaced. We just completed that last week. Wainimi Bay Alley's Phase One was a grinded overlay and we completed that in January. And we continue to make asphalt repairs throughout the city. And here's a couple of pictures of the work on Ventura Road that we did last weekend and this past weekend. We will be striping at night this week. Here is Wainimi Bay Alley paving. This was a grinded overlay. On the left side, you can see the alleys we did, there were six of them. This is Phase One. We will do another phase next year, possibly later this year. The cost for this was just under $150,000. And this was gas tax funds. The Volker area resurfacing. It was delayed in the fall due to weather and the pandemic, but we just completed this last week. The total cost was just under $160,000. And we'll be striping this next week. We continue to do sidewalk maintenance program. Here, Public Works Street Division has just completed all of Wainimi Bay sidewalk trip hazard repairs that are within the public right-of-way. Not the private walks, but things abutting in the streets. You can see on the left the before, you can see on the right the after. The pictures on the right side of your screen are grinder. And we have a special vacuum which collects the concrete dust. Traffic signal repairs. We had an impaired driver hit the controller, signal controller at Pleasant Valley and Ventura Road on March 10th of this year. It knocked the signal out, we had to put up four-way stop. But our contractor, on-call contractor, was able to make a repair within 24 hours. And we got the new controller up and the signal back in place. We take pedestrian safety very seriously. We just installed crosswalk flashing lights at Pleasant Valley in Florence. And this again is to enhance pedestrian safety. We routinely look at intersections and take residents' complaints or concerns about intersections. Wheelhouse and Crossjack was one that we were concerned about with speeders. We took a look at it and we felt the best way to handle this was an always-stop. We posted this on social media. And I want to thank Chief Salinas and the Police Department. They were out there when we put this up and doing enforcement. And it was a team effort with Public Works and PD. Accessible pedestrian signals. On the far left, you can see the old style with a small push button. We're going throughout the city and we're upgrading to either the one in the middle or the one on the far right. And these are easier to push and much more pedestrian-friendly. The Civic Center interior ADA upgrades. We are under construction and we should be finished in June. This will have ADA counters in the lobby for finance and community development. Floodplain Management Ordinance and FEMA flood insurance rate maps. FEMA updates their maps periodically. And we worked with FEMA, we reviewed the maps with them. And then we had to put together a model ordinance. FEMA wants new ordinances done. And the good news is that there are no residents in the 100-year floodplain in Port Wainimi. So that's a good thing. Beach grading and surf rake project. This is a project we start every spring before Memorial Day to prep the beach for the summer. We rent heavy equipment and we pull the sand back from behind the wall and we spread it. And this has been ongoing, this has been going on this week. And then in the lower right corner, you see one of our tractors with a surf rake. This surf rake can pick up bottles, small pieces of- This surf rake can pick up bottles, small pieces of debris. And we put this out there now, prepping for Memorial Day. And we take it out there the week before the Fourth of July and Labor Day. And we try and get it out there as much as possible as staffing permits during the summer, usually on a Thursday, to try and prep the beach for the weekend. Baseball Field Restoration. Our Landscape Division has been busy at Bubbling Springs. We mowed the lawns. We fertilized them. We watered them. We eradicated over 125 gophers. We leveled the infield, and we cleared some of the litter out of the common areas. We were ready for the May 1st opening. Our Landscape Division is still continuing to do gopher eradication in our other areas, Moronda Park, the beach area, Bulker Park, Bubbling Springs, and other city parcels. Arbor Day was April 8th tree planting. And we had at Winnemoo Park, we planted a tree. You can see one of our landscape workers planting the tree. We are a tree city, and Arbor Day and the planting of a tree is part of being a tree city. Our Solid Waste Collection Services. We have 409,000 residential customers, and that includes the Navy Base. We have 114 commercial accounts. And even during COVID, we were able to maintain services without interruption. We did have several solid waste drivers that had COVID contact or came down with COVID, but we were able to keep operations going. Last year, solid waste picked up over 15 tons of refuse and 4,600 tons of recyclable material between the city and the Navy bases. And we purchased four replacement trucks in the past two fiscal years, and this was previously authorized by the city council. System Repair and Upgrades to the Water Division. We continue to have water line leaks. We had a water main, a six-inch water line leak at Myrna. And we had a six-inch water line leak near Elfin Green. We had also had 10 service line leaks since January that have been repaired. We upgraded a valve on a main line in December. And here you see numerous pictures. Some of the work is done at night. We work through the night to repair the line to make sure that people have their water. Our Wastewater Division, our Market Street Lift Station Rehabilitation is completed. And Wastewater Division responded to numerous lift station pump clogs during the pandemic due to an increased use of sanitary wipes and cloths being flushed. The good news is we had no wastewater spills during this period. Coming Attractions, coming soon. Moronda Park Tennis and Pickleball Court Reconstruction. You can see on the map, on the right-hand corner, Courts Seven and Eight, the existing pickleball courts. We've had a job walk. We have a layout. And we're going to be coming back to City Council for a ward of reconstruction of these two pickleball courts, Seven and Eight, in June. We have deteriorating storm drains. So this year, we're going to be slip lining some storm drains, and this is near, behind Mary's Market. We're going to have to slip line that storm drain. Bus Shelters. We have grant funding for six new bus shelters, and these will be going in. You can see the locations, City Hall, Ventura Road at Bard, Surfside, a beach stop at Surfside Drive, Channel Islands, and Ventura at Sunkist. And our next, one of our next road rehabilitation projects will be Patterson. It's a two-inch grind and overlay, and that'll be Hemlock to Channel Islands. And on the bike, on the promenade, we'll be striping for a bike lane, a Class One, and also pedestrian walking lanes. And we'll be lining portions of our sewer system at select locations. And currently, we have 14 vacancies that we're working with HR to fill. And we are the friendly city by the sea. And are there any questions?
I have one question. Back about six or seven slides, I think you said that there was 15 tons of refuge and 4,600 tons of recyclables. Is that accurate?
I got those numbers from Fred Camarillo today. So, yes, they're accurate.
One more slide.
Okay, okay.
There it is.
They are accurate. I checked with Fred this afternoon.
But 4,600 tons of recyclable materials? Is there a value associated with that?
No, we don't have, we take it to the recycle, the transfer station over at Oxnard. And I'm not up on the latest arrangement between the city of Port Wainimi and Oxnard. But recyclables, you know, there's not much money anymore in recyclables. Things have changed. I'd have to look into that and see. I could come back to the council with more information on recyclables if you'd like.
Well, it just, it just seems a little odd that we'd have 4,600 tons of recyclables versus 15 tons of refuge. Maybe, am I reading it wrong or?
No.
No, that's correct.
No, it's correct. That's, and I'm sorry on this one, it was supposed to be an average. On, that's supposed to be an average per month of what we do across the beach or the base and the city. With regards to the recyclable material, that market, when China decided that they were going to put very strict restrictions on what they would take, the commodity market for that went down. So there's a lot of things that they don't even accept anymore. That's something that everybody's dealing with at this point still with that market gone. And we did, used to get paid for the recyclable material, but because it's commingled with a lot of the other things that these people that have on the, separated at the transfer station and then sold off to the other markets. With the loss of all of that, they, there just wasn't any place for it to go. And consequently, where we, for several years, we averaged about $80,000 a year in getting paid back for the recyclable material that we took through the transfer station. But at this point now, they accept it, but there isn't the market to get rid of it, and we no longer get paid for any of that.
Wow. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. First of all, Mr. Carolina, thank you for the report. It kind of always amazes me on the many different facets and the very many different projects each quarter you folks are involved with. Especially when, you know, we have, you have so many vacancies. So my commendations to you. I was out recently this weekend at the Little League Fields of Bubbling Springs, and it was just warming my heart that, while I know there's a lot of work still to be done on the field, it was nice to see so many kids, especially with this COVID environment, out there now again enjoying sports and all the parents excited. And so again, commendations for the work that you have done on that. I did notice, you know, that, well, are there going to be any further steps being taken to improve the fields? I know like there's, you know, I've seen some various different bald spots and stuff like that they brought to my attention despite the fact that it's a massive improvement. Are there any other steps that they're going to be taking on overseeding or whatever to kind of further enhance the fields?
Councilman Rollins, we were prepping it for opening day, but maintenance of the fields is the responsibility of the Little League. So Public Works at this time doesn't have any additional plans for the fields. Field maintenance is left in the hands of the Little League organization.
Okay. And then, and I, maybe I kind of understood, you had mentioned that there's no homes within Port Wainimi that are under the 100-year flood potential. I'm not sure if I'm reading it, saying it right. Just a side note, I noticed in our neighborhood, when they first put the development, they did one particular area to have a flood control basin. And I guess they determined that, you know, they weren't going to have housing there because they needed that flood. Has that changed since they first developed that project 15 years ago?
That's onsite retention for runoff. That's why you have that retention basin in that one location. That's not associated with the flood plane level. The flood plane level, FEMA takes elevations, looks at historic flood levels, and then has refined it. And previously, there were several areas that were in what was considered the 100-year flood plane level, which would increase the cost of flood insurance for those residents. Well, now there are no homes in Port Wainimi that fall within the 100-year flood zone. So that's a good thing for homeowners insurance. But that, what you're talking about in that development is a retention basin.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I'm scrolling my toolbar here. I don't, Councilmember Martinez.
Hey, Don. Thanks for, oh, thank you, Mayor Gama. And I want to say thanks, Don, for the presentation. I just wanted to double check how everything was going with the volleyball courts because I heard some good news earlier this month. And I heard that they were going to be putting up some new volleyball courts and maybe also some playground equipment on the beach.
Councilman Martinez, that's being handled by Gabriella Basua in the parks, the volleyball and the swing. So I'm sure she could give you an update email sometime, but that's handled by them now.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
And any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, host, for telling me to unmute. Appreciate it.
I'd like to recognize my Public Works team. They're a great team, and I'm very proud to be the Public Works Director. So on behalf of them, thank you.
Thank you, Don. And yes, you know, we always are very prideful in the fact that the roads of Wainimi are very well maintained. They look good. They feel good when you're driving on them. And for that, we're truly grateful and thankful. And we appreciate all the good work that everybody's doing. I love the new trash truck. It's nice to see money that we allocated being spent on quality, awesome equipment like that. So that's really nice to see and really appreciate it. Thank you. And we are going to move on now to the consent calendar. And the first item on the consent calendar is approve minutes of the city council meeting for the regular meeting of May 3rd, 2021. The recommendation of staff is to approve the minutes. Item number five, receive and file the finance cash disbursements from April 27th, 2021 through May 10, 2021. The recommendation is to receive and file the disbursements. Item number six, second reading by title only, waiving full reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Sections 3601 through 3611 of Chapter Seven of Article Three of the Municipal Code relating to smoking and vaping regulations on city-owned properties and throughout the city of Port Wainimi. The recommendation is to read by title only, waiving a full reading of the ordinance and adopt the ordinance amending Sections 3601 through 3611 of Chapter Seven of Article Three of the Municipal Code relating to smoking and vaping regulations on city-owned properties and throughout the city of Port Wainimi. Item seven, Citizens Advisory Commission and Transaction and Use Tax Citizens Oversight Committee Appointments. The recommendation, make the following appointments to the city's advisory bodies. Item one, appoint Walter Moody to the Citizen Advisory Commission for a four-year term. The second item is appoint Josue Mendez to the Transaction and Use Tax Citizens Oversight Committee for a two-year term. Item number eight, adopt a resolution authorizing staff to operate the Senior Nutrition Program in cooperation with the County of Ventura. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Community Services and Recreation Program Manager to contract with Ventura County Area Agency on aging to continue administering the Senior Nutrition Program in cooperation with the County of Ventura. Item number nine, allocation of $25,808.90 to purchase Emergency Operations Center computer equipment and acceptance of $12,904.45 from the 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant, otherwise known as the EMPG. The recommendation authorizes the allocation of $25,808.90 from the Police Department Office Equipment Account to purchase laptop computers, webcams, wireless mics, printers, and a charging card for the Emergency Operations Center. And adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of $12,904.45 from the 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, to fund 50% of the cost of the project. Item 10, award of contract for city towing services to Platinum Towing and Payless Towing. The recommendation, award a contract to Platinum Towing and Payless Towing for city and police towing services. The term for both contracts shall begin June 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, with two additional one-year extensions available upon mutual consent at the discretion of the city manager as authorized by the city council. And that does it for the consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yeah, I move to approve. I just wanted to make one comment. And that is I wanted to commend Councilman Martinez for recommending these two people to the two commissions. I think they're going to provide, I read their bios, and I think they're going to provide some valuable community input to both of those committees. So thank you, Councilman Martinez.
Yes, I agree with that. I know Walter Moody, his heart is in recreation. His heart is with the youth of our community. And again, that is our priority to focus our youth, on the youth in our community, and I appreciate that appointment.
Second, the motion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to business items. We have no public hearings. And item number 11, request for additional police staffing. Staff, please present the report, and I believe Chief Salinas will be presenting on this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and city staff. Before you, you have a staff report requesting an additional police officer position. The position is to fund a sworn police officer whose primary job assignment will be to address the homeless issue in our city and to take on the role of cannabis compliance officer in our city. This will also include monitoring all tobacco and alcohol outlets in the city. We don't have anyone currently filling that role at this time. To give you a little background, as you've heard many times in previous presentations, we are by capita the cannabis capital of the world. We have currently approved 10 licensed retail dispensaries along with four additional applications in the process. When you add the remaining cannabis businesses which are currently operating or in the process, we are forecasting a total of 25 cannabis-related businesses in our small city. This burden currently falls on the chief of police, who helped create our current cannabis program, which is being which is being emulated across the county as well as the state. So to give you a little more background, uh, in December of two thousand seventeen, city council was approached about adding a cannabis control officer to our staff, but it was denied as council didn't have a complete understanding of the type of revenue which the city would be bringing in from cannabis sales. Uh, they rightfully didn't want to fund positions that they didn't quite know would be covered by cannabis revenue. So now, over three years later, uh, we can safely say that cannabis revenue has exceeded our expectations and then some. It takes time to make this transition as we have a responsibility to our community to, to do this. Uh, having the chief of police oversee the, this program made sense in its infancy and to ensure its success. Well, with the cannabis growth in our city, uh, pun intended, we needed a sworn police officer to ensure compliance and to monitor all cannabis activity in our city. So in addition, uh, I applied for proposition sixty-four cannabis grant money in March, which was approved by the state in April, which will fund this cannabis position for the next three years. Not only will the cannabis officer ensure compliance and conduct proactive enforcement, they will be responsible for educating our community and our youth. This grant ranked number two in the state because we submitted an innovative and achievable project with, which seeks to address low-level youth cannabis offenders. It's a diversion progress, a program which addresses education, prevention and intervention. And quite frankly, as Mayor Gama says, this will help us make our youth the VIPs of our community. So now, uh, this will be a hybrid position uh that is coupled with the duties of a homeless liaison officer, or commonly known as an HLO. The two primary complaints from our citizens in Port Huaynimi are quality of life issues, traffic and issues stemming from the homeless, which include subjects disturbing, shoplifting, pandering, trespassing, illegal encampments and subjects using narcotics. Approximately twelve to fifteen of our local transients account for over fifty percent of our calls for service. We don't have the staffing nor the time to dedicate to these transients who need individualized attention to address their many needs. While ninety percent are typically suffering from the effects of drug or alcohol use or mentally ill, helping them get the resources they need or breaking the cycle is the first step. On the contrary, there are some that need to be incarcerated for extended periods of time to get the help they need, and we don't have anyone in that role to achieve that. Right now, we are not seeing extended jail sentences for our problem transients as these cases are being presented individually and not as a cumulative criminal history. This position will help us achieve this goal. On many occasions, the arrest of a transient drug addict who is transported to county jail in the morning is often seen back in our city by the time the officer gets off his shift. We need a sworn officer to help identify the needs of our transients and provide a customized plan which solves the problem. A current example are two brothers who currently spend their entire days at Huaynimi Beach. They are not addicts, nor do they have any serious mental health issues. What they need is attention and guidance. Programs like backpack medicine are great, but they are county-wide programs which can only visit our city so many times a year. We need an officer who is specially trained in working with the homeless and connecting with, connecting them with needed services. As listed in your staff report, this officer will collaborate with local agencies, such as the Oxnard Police Department and County of Ventura, will be our city liaison for all service providers and community organizations for the homeless, evaluate crime prevention through environmental design issues, contributing to vagrancy, ownership and responsibility. This is whereby our HLO will actually work with homeowners as well as the shopping center managers to look at environmental design issues to address the homeless issue uh to prevent them from using their areas or continuing to come back. The HLO will also maintain and make available to all department employees a list of assistance programs and other resources that are available to the homeless and meet with community organizations, social services and key stakeholders that render to the homeless. And of course, they'll be present during any cleanup operations conducted by this department involving the removal of personal property of the homeless to ensure that the rights of the homeless are not violated. This will include regularly patrolling our beachfront. This request does include a four-by-four vehicle to assist with such operations. So in two thousand eighteen, we made a commitment to our community when they voted over seventy percent for Measure U funds to help address a number of issues in the city. Having attended over thirty neighborhood meetings regarding Measure U, quality of life issues were on the top of the list. Our residents want us to address the homeless issue in our city. We have done a long list of things to help mitigate the homeless issue in our city, including hosting cleanups, enacting ordinances, educating the community, backpack medicine and so forth. The next step is to have someone specially assigned to this position to really focus on this issue. Many of our homeless population have mental issues, and the officer will be able to provide all individuals suffering from mental health problems and find them the resources they need as well. So with that, uh, I will entertain any questions that any of our city council will have.
Would like to go first. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Salinas. That was a very um complete report and presentation. I appreciate that. Um, my question is, on the grant that you applied for uh under cannabis, was, was that, was it a grant or was it just? What was it and how much did we receive?
Sure, when the voters voted on cannabis back in two thousand sixteen, uh, part of the decision that uh if cannabis was passed, proposition sixty-four grant funds were gonna be made available to those cities that allowed cannabis to operate within their jurisdiction. This is known as proposition sixty-four. So as a result, we applied for these cannabis funds uh through an application process. Uh, twenty-seven communities filed for this uh money, and we came in number two uh across the entire state. And we're funded uh just short of one million dollars uh to fund a cannabis compliance officer as well as to uh facilitate a youth diversion cannabis program in our city.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and then my other question is, do you have an idea um or stats on how much time and um the number of calls uh that you get regarding homeless um in homeless issues?
Uh, exact numbers, no, but I can say with certainty, uh, over fifty percent of our calls for service involve homeless transient uh issues uh that we deal with uh on a near daily basis. Uh, and that's something that we want to address.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez?
Yes, thank you, Chief, for that presentation. I have a question. Do you have someone in mind already that's on staff? Is this going to be something you're looking to outsource um and bring in from another agency? Is this a new hire? And what, what are your thoughts on that? And also, what type of training are you going to put them through in order them to get up to date and, and familiar with all the issues that they need and all the organizations that they need to connect with?
Sure, uh, great question. So this will be an in-house position. So the position will create a new police officer position, so we will backfill that. But we will be hiring or promoting an officer within our organization uh to this assignment for a number of reasons. One, they know our community already. Uh, they know all of our homeless and transients already. They know where all the encampments get set up. Uh, they know all the key stakeholders in our community. Uh, so it will be someone within our organization. Uh, they will be afforded the opportunity to apply. There will be an interview process, uh, because I don't wanna just assign someone to this position. I want someone who generally wants to work in this assignment. Uh, once someone fills a position, uh, we will send them to training. But more importantly, we will send them to the cities of Ventura and Oxnard to work with their units uh so they can become familiar with um best practices as well as become familiar with those uh resources available to those cities and quickly become acclimated and bring that information back to us and really hit the ground running. As well as, all of our officers are already CIT-trained, which stands for Crisis Intervention Training. Uh, so we won't need to do that. Uh, but there will be some additional homeless training uh that the state makes available through post that will be most assuredly sending our officer to.
Thank you. Um, and one question that is thought of. What, every officer has a shift, so how is the shift work, work going to work out for the homeless leads?
So this will be a flexible work schedule. There will be a default schedule of Monday through Friday. But as we know, the homeless issue is twenty-four-seven. Uh, same with being a cannabis control officer, as those businesses are open seven days a week. So that assignment will involve the officer working during the week and on the weekends. So their schedule will fluctuate depending on what is happening in our city. Uh, they could make themselves available for a coastal cleanup. Uh, they could, it could have to do with what encampments have come up all of a sudden. So a lot of it is gonna be driven by uh the specific type of activity we're experiencing at that present time as well as uh what is happening with the cannabis industry at the time, whether or not they wanna do undercover decoy operations or do compliance checks, not just during the middle of the week, but on the weekends as well. So to answer your question, is that officer will be working a schedule essentially seven days a week that, um, but forty hours a week. But really, at any time, uh, based on what is happening in our city.
Thank you.
I think you're on mute, Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez, thank you. Do you have any questions or comments?
No questions. I, I, I do think that this is a position that's necessary in our city and um uh, and that's, that's about it. I think, I think this is gonna be great for our city.
Thank you, sir.
So um I have a couple comments and a question. My first question is, so this is grant money. And um a hundred percent of the grant can be used to fund both aspects of this position, the cannabis portion and the HLA portion?
No, so it's only paying uh for one hundred percent of the cannabis control officer for the first three years. Uh, so it's paying essentially for half the salary, which is approximately eighty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, and um what's the thinking behind it for wheel, uh, the, will the four, so the four-wheel-drive vehicle that is, is not a part of the grant?
That's correct.
And, and the thinking behind having a, a four-wheel-drive vehicle is?
Is because we don't have one that will uh be able to transport uh a number of items, uh, equipment uh for this HLO officer to have to use or deal with. An example would be uh some of the homeless encampments that they will have to deal with, whether it be on the Port Huaynimi side or assisting Oxnard on the uh Oxnard side. Uh, they commonly have to interact with homeless people that are commuting our city with shopping carts. Uh, that is another reason to have a truck available to them, uh, as well as, uh, as we all know, transients don't um move through our city with just a little bit of property. Uh, they typically have a lot of property with them, and so uh the truck will assist them uh with that as well. And, and really, the big reason is being able to traverse uh our beach uh in all directions at any time to uh address our homeless issue.
Um, being that it's Mental Health Awareness Month, um, and actually, before it, actually, we got into May uh when uh uh interim district attorney um Nazarenko came and provided us the homeless database Lea, uh, Lea's son phone number. I took it upon myself to begin to interact with some of the regular mentally deficient, quote, homeless people in our community. Um, and um uh, what I found, and I've made multiple calls in trying to link an individual who would accept assistance, and I struck, I've struck out like every time. It's like, so it, it appears to me that there's a lack of services in the county. In other words, the demand for the services is way higher than the amount of services being able to be provided. And um I was even told by Turning Point, I believe, um, that at first they were trying to assist me in trying to, to make contact with this individual. And then uh the last text I got back from him the other day was that uh they're not gonna service Port Huaynimi. So how, what, what are your recommendations? Because it seems to me that, that this problem of linking people who need services to those services is, it's a county problem, it's a state problem. What can we do as a city to, to try and get uh the legislature above us to get more services? I mean, we need on-the-ground services. I mean, this weekend, when we're getting ready for a NAMI walk, there's an individual that I'm sure you're familiar with. She became homeless, I think, three or four, maybe even five years ago. I actually saw the day that her truck was confiscated because she stopped paying for it in parking lot C. And her first comment was, I'm officially homeless. And um she, and I asked her, what can we do to help you? And um she went on a rant and rave that, you know, the police stole her medication, that they, she has a chip inserted in her body and, and so, and she just went on and on and on. And she knows me by name and she, she'll say nice things to me, and then I'll be a hundred feet away. I could hear her yelling and screaming nasty things about me. And so, you know, it, it's such a difficult situation. So what can we do as a community to take our experiences and elevate it and try and bring awareness to, hey, we need more access to services to help people get back on their meds, so forth and so on?
Okay, so what we are doing now is the very first step in elevating our position and addressing the homeless issue. Uh, that's the first thing. I think uh Councilwoman Hernandez and Perez can testify to backpack medicine and the difference it makes when you actually bring the services right to that individual. And you know exactly what services they need and what programs apply. When you take someone and you just try and throw them into this homeless resource network, it, they, they usually fall short because someone's not holding their hand or they're not being um diverted to the right program, and that's how things start falling apart. With this, this officer will be able to specifically get them the exact program and resource they need to be successful and hopefully work them out of the system.
But what about the ones that absolutely refuse any assistance whatsoever? Are we, are we gonna, is that officer gonna move them over to Oxnard? Or, or when we go to the corner of uh Ventura Road and Channel Islands at KFC where there seems to be a lot of, I don't even know what to say, but it's, it's not a pretty sight. Um, how, how do we deal with that? How can we, I mean, it's just, it just seems to me that the drugs and the mental illness is a bigger part of the problem.
Yes, and so that's where this officer comes into place also. So we are talking about the people that want help or that we can get help to them. Now, we're talking about people who don't want help, are service-resistant uh and have been in the system because of narcotics or uh substance abuse. And so now, this officer will focus on them and focus on long-term incarceration uh to address this issue. And some people say, well, we can't incarcerate all the homeless. No, we can. But in custody, they can now get some more specialized service in, in addressing some of their mental health issues as well as their drug addiction issues. So um we are asking for compliance at first, getting everyone the resources they need. And if they don't wanna abide by the rules and wanna continue to break the law by living on the beach or pandering or, or using narcotics, uh, then we are gonna resort to uh incarceration.
So with this individual I referenced, I noticed that she's been sleeping in and around the bathrooms regularly for quite some time. So what would be, what would this officer do with that individual?
Good question. So right now, she has been getting cited on a nearly daily basis. Um, and so what ends up typically happening, and after thirty to sixty days, it turns to a warrant. And we've been taking her, we've actually already arrested her a couple of times on warrants. And so we will take her to county jail. Uh, but unfortunately, county jail doesn't wanna keep her very long. So what we'll do is, well, we will build up a case. Uh, there's also a program known as um Community Intervention Court, uh, having to deal with the homeless uh where we can forcibly try and get these people help and assistance, uh, such as that individual that you're talking about. So uh, we, this program or this officer will specifically be in place to address those specific type of issues uh that we are dealing with with that young lady uh over at the beach.
So with this other individual who I've been trying to link up with services, so rather than calling these county numbers, we're gonna call our guy?
Absolutely. You're gonna say, hey, we've got someone over here. Uh, and hopefully, you won't have to call because uh that officer will already be right on top of it. Uh, but if that does happen, absolutely, absolutely, one hundred percent.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's good. And, and I just, I want, I just wanna make this point again is that uh it seems to me that there's a lack of available services for the people in need. And um I'm a little, I'm hopeful, but I'm a little bit on the negative thought side in thinking that, okay, so now we have this officer, and he's gonna run into the same problems that I'm running into is that, that he can't, you know, free up the social worker's time to get out here and work with somebody that needs to be worked with and. And, and so, you know, maybe as a council, maybe we could try and elevate to the county and then to the state that, hey, there's a massive surplus right now. Let's get some money available to try to link these people that need services to the services that they need. Because it's unfortunate that when they end up in jail, then they get the treatment, the meds and everything that they need. And like you said, we can't incarcerate everybody. So I, I hope, I want to be optimistic and I also want to be very aggressive in trying to link people that need help to the services that they need. Councilmember Perez.
Mayor Protem Rollins, did you have a question before me?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Many of the, many of the questions have already been addressed by the other esteemed councilmen, but I had one, a couple. How much overtime is spent right now on dealing with homeless situations or with, or with the cannabis situations as this position is going to afford the power to deal with it?
Well, I, I can't account for any overtime right now having to do with the homeless, though I will testify again that over fifty percent of our time is spent addressing homeless issues in our city. So the ability to have one officer address it does free up our officers to be more readily available for other situations. In terms of overtime for cannabis compliance, right now, because I don't get paid overtime. So whether I'm here forty hours a week or sixty hours a week, so there is really no overtime generated from cannabis compliance or regulation, except when we do these undercover decoy operations, which we've done a couple for our cannabis dispensaries, because I need to pay officers then to come in on their days off to facilitate such operations. So it's been very limited at this point.
And you, you foresee this position being evenly divided between the two areas? Or do you sense that one particular area will have a more predominance of need?
That's a very good question, and I expect it to pretty much fall right down the middle initially. And then there are going to be weeks where we don't have any homeless issues because, and then there's going to be weeks where he's going to be spending a majority or she's going to be spending a majority of her time on this. So I think it's going to be a, a careful balance. But I do believe it's going to be a back and forth for at least some time until we can kind of get both programs underway.
And the, the million dollars that we're receiving will only fund for the next three years? Or maybe I, I understood it wrong?
No, you didn't. So the million dollars, three hundred thousand of it is coming to the police department to fund this position, with the other six hundred thousand dollars going to the Boys and Girls Club to facilitate the diversion program for low-level cannabis youth violators in our city and in South Oxnard.
So how, how would they use that diversion money or in your discussions with them?
So a, a program has already been set up whereby they will have counselors and the violators will be diverted. Rather than getting a citation or getting fined, they will enter a six to eight week diversion program, which will teach them and make them more aware about the dangers of cannabis use. And it is a program that this county currently doesn't have. And we are very excited that it will probably be a program that gets emulated throughout the state after we are, are done with it over these next three years. And it does involve us working closely with the Oxnard Police Department, the probation office, the district attorney's office, the school district, and several other key stakeholders.
And what will be the timeline for initiating this staff person?
So we are going to, if this gets approved this evening, we are going to post this position by the end of this week. There'll be a two-week open application process. We will then interview the individual within about three weeks, and they will be ready to go in this position by July first. And the individual will be selected using an interview panel of people across the county who specialize in this area. So we make sure that we select the right person.
And being that I heard earlier that, you know, the best suited person probably would be somebody familiar, an in-house person who's already familiar with the system. Will they be then, if they were chosen, are they again going to be taken away? I know that you're also at a lack of approved officers as it was. So you, you take this person out on an already depleted staff?
Yes, so we just had an officer come out of field training. And then we have one more officer right now that's currently in field training, who is a lateral from the Montebello Police Department, who should be out of field training in the next three months. And then we also have one officer that just returned from being injured on duty, as well as our plans to send three police officers to the upcoming police academy in October.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes, I have a question and a comment. So I know sometimes it happens when you have specialized officers tasked to do certain things, something happens and somebody gets taken off duty and then that person has to be real allocated back into patrol. Will that, will that scenario be something that potentially could happen if there is need for it?
That is a good question. So with the extra body working during the week or on the weekend, it will be an additional visible presence. That's the one important thing by adding this officer into the field. And second, we had issues with that before at this agency and we're going to make sure that doesn't happen again. For instance, when they had a motor officer here and someone would call in sick, they'd have that motor officer fill that position and now that motor officer wasn't doing any type of traffic enforcement. So no, because this pace, this is being paid for by the grant, we can't come up short and actually assign that officer to another position. So if we have an officer call in sick, that officer will be backfilled with a different officer, not with the HLO officer.
Great, thank you. And my comment to follow up on Mayor Gama's concern about funding and the lack of resources and that, through the Mental Health Initiative, talking to Assemblymember Jackie Irwin, I brought up that fact because I was told by Scott Walker that the state had cut funding to behavioral health by thirty-three percent. And I had mentioned that fact to her and she was surprised because given the budget, she didn't think that was necessary. So she's having her staff do research to find out why that is and what we can do to change it. So I'm hoping she comes up with some good information and we can start there getting back funding.
Yes, with the additional seventy-five billion dollars that the state of California has, hopefully some of that money comes in this direction. And I wanted to add a comment to what Mayor Gama had said. This HLO will also allow us to, to actually transport our individualized homeless people that we are trying to get resources to and actually transport them to the resources they need. Right now, we wouldn't transport anyone. We would give them the information they need or refer backpack medicine to them. Now they will actually have the time to actually even transport that individual to a county resource if needed to get them the attention they need.
Any other questions? Councilmember Rollins?
I just had a comment and I was going to mention the fact that there is large amounts of funding coming down through the American Rescue Act and through Governor Newsom's budget for homelessness. So I think we'll see a surge in resources for homelessness. And Councilman Martinez and I will be presenting soon our findings from our assessment on homelessness in Port Wainimi, pulling everybody's information together and then presenting some recommendations to the council to move forward.
Yes, it's, it's an age-old issue when, you know, you, when somebody's ready for assistance, then that's the time to make the link and the intervention. And so I think it's, it's, it's very well timed, this position. But my process concern is that this would have, if we would have had a normal budget year where we are actually working on a budget a couple of months ago, and we could have talked about this and we could have planned for it in our budget. So that's the one hesitation I have is that we don't even have a budget yet. And now we're adding a position, albeit half of it is funded from this grant. And on that, how stringent is this grant process to get reimbursed for fifty percent of that officer's salary? Do you submit a time sheet or how, how does it work? How do you account for fifty percent of the officer's time being spent on the cannabis portion of the grant?
Sure. Part of the grant, first of all, is that we had to pay for an audit. So an audit was part of the grant. Two, we do have to submit officers' payroll sheets. And we submit quarterly reports and evaluations to the BSCC every quarter. Where we'll then get a reimbursement check for all of our reimbursements, which includes not only the officer's time, but any equipment that we applied for as part of the grant, such as like a laptop.
So in regards to the six hundred thousand outreach through the Boys and Girls Club, is that county-wide or is it just specific to Oxnard? Or actually, is it just specific to Port Wainimi? I'm a little unclear on how that works, so.
It is all Port Wainimi. Port Wainimi got into the cannabis game very early. We are the only city in the county that qualifies, and so we got all one million dollars. And so it will be benefiting the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Oxnard and Port Wainimi. The only reason I say South Oxnard as well is because the city of Port Wainimi does not have any junior highs, nor does it have any high schools. And so, but our kids go to those schools. So those schools will benefit from us, even though they serve Oxnard as well. So that includes Wainimi High School, Blockstock Junior High and E.O. Green Junior High.
What about Channel Islands High School and or Oxnard High School?
If, if they service Port Wainimi as well, absolutely.
So six hundred thousand dollars then is going to fund how many positions or counseling positions? It, it just seems like six hundred thousand dollars is twice as much of the, of the funds that we're getting. So what, why is that disparity?
So it is over a three-year period. I'm, I'm not quite sure. There's a lot more involved with supplies and staffing. Each one of these youth go through a six to eight week program, as well as we have target marks and objectives. So I believe we are attempting to serve well over three hundred youth during this time period. So if you, yes.
So it's what, three, two hundred?
So about two thousand dollars per. Yes.
That sounds pretty good. So any other questions? Mr. Rollins, your hand is up. I'm not sure if it's, it's kind of hard to see, but you're muted. You're still muted. So I guess he doesn't have a question. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve the position as requested.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Let me, I'm trying to get back to my talking point. See where we're at here. Okay. Okay, so we just completed item number eleven with a five oh affirmative vote. And we are now going to call to order the joint session of the Port Wainimi City Council, the Port Wainimi Surplus Property Authority and the Port Wainimi Housing Authority. We will now call this meeting, this joint meeting of the City Council, the Port Wainimi Surplus Property Authority and the Port Wainimi Housing Authority to order. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call? See who's here?
Yes, sir. We're actually going to do two different roll calls. And I just want to ensure that we give just a moment for Mr. Brown to log on, sorry, Member Brown for the Housing Authority roll call vote. So I'll go ahead and start with the Surplus Property Authority roll call. Member Hernandez?
Yes, here.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Perez? Vice Chair Rollins?
Yes.
And Chair Gama?
Yes, and I do want to apologize to Mr. Brown. I didn't realize that we're, anyways, in the future, we should try to get these meetings out of the way early. So Mr. Brown doesn't have to stay with us the entire time. But yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, sir. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote for the Port Wainimi Housing Authority. Member Brown? Okay, I'll give him another additional minute here. Member Hernandez?
Here.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Perez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rollins?
Yes.
And Chair Gama?
Yes.
And Member Brown, just trying one more time to see if your mic is working, sir.
Is he in the lobby?
It shows, it shows that he's joined. It just has a dark screen. It doesn't appear that he's muted either, so I'm not, not positive. Maybe technical difficulties on, on his part.
Got some dinner because he's been waiting for so long. Well, I don't have his phone number. We'll text him. Wish I did. Okay, any recommendations how to proceed? If anybody had a recommendation how we should proceed right now, please.
Sir, I would suggest that we go ahead and just proceed through and ask if there's any public comments and go ahead and let the staff present the report. And I can always go back and not eat Mr. Brown's attendance if we can get him online. I'll connect with him through email and see if I can provide any assistance to him.
Okay, should we do the surplus one first?
Mayor Protem Rollins, it's just one item. It's being heard by all three agencies at one time. So it's the same item for all three.
Okay, how about if we table this item and we move to item twelve and then come back to item eleven? If Mr. Brown is not available in the next thirty seconds? That's one way we could handle it, or we could just move on and put out Mr. Brown.
And we, sorry, Mayor, we are on item number twelve, and that's the final agenda item. So this is just the last and final agenda item heard by all three agencies.
We're on item eleven, I believe, are we not?
Well.
Well.
No, we just voted on eleven.
Isn't there a, I'm looking at item twelve as interim finance director.
Right, it applies to all three agencies. It affects all three agencies, so it's a combined item.
Okay, so we're going to move on. Madam Clerk, are there any general public comments for the Surplus Property Authority and or Housing Authority?
No, sir, there are no, there were no general public comments received.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, are you ready to present your report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, City Council. I'll keep this fairly quick. In the very recent past, an unanticipated and unplanned early retirement was executed with our finance director some, just over a year prior to the end of his contract, which created an immediate and urgent need to, to bring in an interim director, especially with a, a pending budget, you know, at the end of June, you know, pressing, pressurizing our finance department for, for time. That search identified, saw it and identified a individual that was extremely adept at efficient budget process, but also is familiar with our finance and county enterprise system. That person was and is Anes Kiryu, and she was a finance director in Galt and is now an annuitant. Because of her status as an annuitant, we had to assure that the employment agreement satisfied a very complex and extensive set of criteria for both state law and CalPRA's retirement system so that she would not lose or sacrifice. so that she would not lose or sacrifice any of her benefits. The contract that you have before you and the staff report that you have read allows us to assure that her retirement benefits, but also her service to the city, is sound. And she will fulfill primarily a role in executing our budget process, as you all know, is well behind timeline at this state. So with that, the staff is recommending that you confirm my appointment of Anes Kiryu as the Interim Director of Finance for both, well, the entire group of City Surplus Property Authority and Housing Authority, that you also adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a temporary employment agreement for interim Director of Finance services in conformance with California Public Employees Retirement System and state law requirements, and that you approve the terms of the temporary employment agreement with interim Director of Finance, Anes Kiryu. And that completes my report subject to your questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Rollins?
So with the appointment of this person, what timeline do you feel that we'll be able to have a budget proposal for the coming year?
Based on discussions with both finance staff and our recommended interim Director of Finance, the ability to complete a budget by the end of June is not executable. And we are shooting for a end-of-July timeframe to complete a comprehensive and a budget that's going to accommodate a variety of very unique things. Some revenue through grants and American Relief Recovery Act funding, but also a variety of master plans for capital budget consideration as well. So with that, we, we are shooting for a end-of-July completion of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget. With it also comes a commitment to doing some comprehensive staff training to improve both her financial and budget acumen. And with it also comes some focus areas that she has a specialty in. So it's a great opportunity for training. And it also allows us a more relaxed timeframe to pursue a very aggressive and thorough recruitment for a future Finance Director.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
I move approval.
Second.
Hold on a second. Johnny Brown is with us. Good evening, sir. You're muted, Mr. Brown. I think we may have lost him again. No, you can talk now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had problems with my iPad. I was on New Year. And then I don't know what happened, so now I'm on my, I'm on my little phone. But the, but the camera is pointing the wrong way.
Okay. Able to hear? City Manager Connors? Introduce the item that we're here to vote on? Okay, well, we have a motion, and I believe we had a second. Any other comments? Okay, I'm trying to give Johnny a chance to get back and be a part of the vote, but doesn't appear that that's going to happen.
I can hear everything you're saying.
Okay, great. So did you hear? We're about ready to take a vote, and I'm wondering if you heard our City Manager describe this interim finance position?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Do you have any questions or comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. This will be a roll call vote for all three agencies. So I'll be doing it for Council, Surplus Property Authority, and the Housing Authority. And we'll use the titles. Councilmember and Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Rollins?
Yes.
Member, I'm sorry, Councilmember and Member Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember and Member Perez?
Yes.
Mayor and Chair Gama?
Yes.
And Member Brown for the Housing Authority?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Yes, and I just want to emphasize, and I know it probably doesn't need emphasizes, but we really need to get our budget rhythm in order. And hopefully, hopefully, we can resolve whatever needs to be resolved and get our budget sooner rather than later. Would really appreciate, appreciate that, so. All right, so we're now moving on. Agency members reports, comments, and requests for future agenda items. I imagine that this is going to be for all three bodies. Is that correct?
Actually, this one will just be for the Surplus Property Authority and the Housing Authority members. And then you'll adjourn those meetings, and then we'll reconvene just the City Council meeting, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this time, members of the Surplus Property Authority and the Housing Authority may make comments or provide reports. Who would like to go first? Okay, anyone have a comment? No?
No.
Okay, I would, I would just like to say I hope that we're making progress with the installation of the new windows. Summer is going to be over rather quickly, and winter time is coming. So I know the staff is working really hard on that, and I just want to emphasize how important that project is. Okay, so having no comments or requests for future agenda items from any of the members of the Surplus Property Authority and the Housing Authority, I'm going to adjourn. The Surplus Property Authority will adjourn to the next meeting with the date yet to be determined. The Port Wainimi Housing Authority will adjourn to the next regular meeting of June seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Thank you, Johnny Brown, for hanging out with us this entire evening. Appreciate it. And doing well, sir.
All right, thank you. It was a long night.
All right, Johnny.
Okay, and let's, let's try not to do that to Johnny in the future.
Thank you, Johnny.
You're welcome.
We're going to reconvene the City Council regular meeting. We have now reconvened the City Council, and we'll hear members' reports and comments at this time. Councilmember Perez, would you like to go first?
Okay. So the only committee I participated in is actually sat in for the first time at the V-Cog as an alternate because Mayor Gama was not able to attend. That was my first V-Cog meeting, and it was actually very interesting. And the main focus of it was each city, they wanted the three important issues that each city is facing. So I gave a brief overview because we went way beyond our time, so we didn't have a lot of time to talk, talk about it. So I pretty much just said that, you know, our infrastructure, getting our parks and beach and streets and everything back into working order and back in shape now that we have a positive budget is one of the main things that we are taking care of. Business recovery is important, bringing in businesses and building up our small businesses and trying to get that economy back. Mental health and homelessness are another issue that we're currently working on. So those were the three things that I briefly touched on. They also gave some updates in several areas, and a lot of information is going to be coming out soon about all the money that's available and how to get our hands on it. They're going to have webinars and detailed emails being pushed out by CalCities, Ventura, and the Treasurer about how we can access the money that will become available. So I'll be looking forward to seeing all that information. And a few agencies just gave brief updates. One of them was interesting from the County of Human Services, talking about the SB ninety-one, the rent relief program. They did a study to find out who is participating, how everyone is participating, and what they can do to make that better. And they've extended the program out. But what's interesting to note is not many of our landlords are participating. So not a lot of renters got to participate fully, is what they were hoping the program would, would be. Because a lot of landlords were trying to recoup most of their money back instead of just getting eighty percent. I thought that was pretty sad to see, that they weren't working with, with their renters more, and they were hoping to get instead all the money that they lost. Barriers to that were debt, not rent. A lot of the minority people actually didn't need rental assistance. Instead, what they did was they racked a bunch of debt in order to make sure that they could pay their rent. But the problem won't allow you to recoup any, the program won't allow them to recoup any money back because they racked up all this debt. So there's an issue with that, that they're trying to figure out a way around it for the next time to, I'm not really sure what they're planning on doing, but it seems a problem. The cash economy, a lot of people were paying in cash, so there was no way to track that they were lacking money for rent. Landlord participation, and some of the language policy, there were nine policy changes to that that they had to fix because it just, the process is so lengthy. It took months for people to sit and do the application, and it was confusing, and there wasn't a lot of people to help them for it. I just think it should have been thought more through and the process streamlined, and something to make it easier for people to want to go in and apply for these programs so they can get assistance. They gave an updated homeless update. We have an increase of a hun, new, of a hundred and twenty new homeless people. It went up from twenty-twenty. We have.
Is that Port Wainimi or Ventura County?
Ventura County. There's, right now, we have nine hundred and forty-nine people housed in shelters. For the Room Q program, we have two hundred and sixty-five total, and a hundred and forty-two were, have been permanently housed, so that's a good thing. There are currently seventeen housing projects that are in the works to help with housing. They haven't listed what those programs are, but I guess there's seventeen new programs coming to help with the homeless issue. There's multiple funding opportunities, which we've already heard about. And one of the biggest problems, a Bloomberg article came out and showed that Ventura County has one of the highest increase in rental increase that they've seen in at least California. And that's astonishing, but that's probably why we have a lot of people that are homeless, because they can't afford the rent here. And that's it. Yeah, that was pretty much it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Martinez?
I have nothing to report, Mayor Gama. I don't know if Rich was there at the Reach meeting. I wasn't available on that meeting, so I'm not sure if Rich wants to fill us in, if he could.
Sure. It was mentioned earlier, we're going to be doing our next installation of the bricks to, there's, I think there's approximately fifteen to twenty bricks. So they mentioned we're going to have a installation kind of ceremony. And if you all can come out there, I think the people who have contributed money towards these bricks, I think would like to see you out there. But that's, that's basically one of the key things that we discussed.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Hernandez, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor Gama. Real quick, I have a number of things I just want to share with you. Last week, I had an opportunity, or was it this week? Days are running so close together. I had the opportunity to tour Orman Beach with the Audubon Society, thanks to Joan Tharp and the leadership there, and learned about, more about the snowy plover and the lease turn. And the message, the takeaway from that is that we need to encourage people to stay off the dunes between March and September on Orman Beach. That includes vehicles and pedestrians and cleanup crews. So if we could all share in getting that information out, we can help preserve the snowy plovers, which nest on top of the sand and aren't quite visible. And they have some netting and cages around them, but those can be damaged, and people can trespass on those. So we just have to be careful that we stay away from those areas. I'm going to have an event planning meeting with a representative from Tradecraft. She contacted me after meeting us at the Boca Park Cleanup. And I just wanted to ask perhaps Chief Salinas if he has somebody who wants to be part of that event planning meeting. They just really want to become more active in the city's events and want to know if, you know, what's coming up, and they want to be informed on any events that they can participate in. I did ask City Manager Connors for a calendar on events, and I think one is being developed. So I look forward to seeing that because that'll be helpful in just informing the community in general and the businesses that want to participate on what's going on. They'll be able to get, hopefully, and get on the website and see what's, what's happening, or on Facebook, wherever that, that calendar resides. I do have an agenda request item. Let's see. Oh, speaking of cleanups, I do plan on organizing a cleanup for Bubbling Springs Park in June. I drove by there a couple of weeks ago, and it looked just really bad, and that trash leads to the ocean. I think it's just a good idea to focus on that park and give it some attention. And then, just to put on everybody's calendar, we have a coastal cleanup day, September eighteenth. Mayor Gama and I are the co-captains for that event. So they, last year, we didn't do it because of COVID. So this year, we're looking forward to a excellent turnout, maybe get as many as we did in twenty nineteen. And I also attended the Chamber Breakfast. Can't go wrong with Captain Chisholm. He delivered the presentation, and he did quite well. And it's, it was very interesting to learn more about the base. Other than that, the only, the other comment I have, and I know this is going to cause some controversy, but I know, Mayor Gama, that, that this concept of youth as our VIP and being our priorities is your vision. I don't think that the council voted on that. So to say that it's a council priority, I don't have anything against youth. I don't have anything against the idea of focusing or directing efforts and energies and monies toward youth. But I would, I would like to have a discussion on that. If that's, if that's what you want, is council support for that initiative or for that concept, I'd like an opportunity in open session to discuss that because I had, I do have some concerns about how that makes other people in the city feel with regards to the focus on youth, okay?
Well, I'm glad you support the youth, and.
I also support seniors, and I support other groups as well. So I just, you know, I just think that we need to have a discussion on that.
Okay. And Councilmember Rollins, for your member reports and comments?
Yes, I just had two particular things. I, as a member of the Ventura County Air Pollution Board, and all this discussion tonight regarding air quality, one of the things that we have an opening right now is for a member from the city of Port Wainimi on the Advisory Council for the Air Pollution Control Board. And so they've asked me to consider somebody to fill that position, so. consider somebody to fill that position, so I'm reaching out to all the different council people in our city, too, if they have some suggestions to contact me directly so that we can fill that position. Initially, I wasn't even aware that we had an opening per se, but some of the other cities are now filling up some of their openings, and when I reached out to learn a little bit more, we haven't had that position filled for a number of years, and so I think we should have somebody, so...
What time are meetings?
I don't know when the, I don't know when the advisory board meets, so I, I can get that information out, but if you have some people that, you know, that's their passion in the city, please reach out to me. And so, that was number one. Number two, I attended both the Gold Coast and the Ventura County Transportation Committee, which I'm a representative of. One of the things I, I want to reach out to the public is if they ever have any kind of concern regarding the, the, the public transportation system to, again, to contact me so that I can kind of get to the right people to kind of deal with any concern they might have. They're going to be resuming the, the, the fee-based system for getting onto the bus right now for, during the COVID period of time, they've actually not charged, and that's had some positives and some negatives, but they're going to be resuming that. Another thing is, let's see, what I will do. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, we heard a little bit of conversation tonight about sand, and a question came up regarding the math in regards to sand, and remember, a couple years ago, when we first came on to council, one of our, my priorities that came out of being a part of Beacon was to make sure everybody was comfortable with the facts of dredging. So, the math for dredging is, it's a biannual cycle, so every two years dredging occurs. The Army Corps of Engineers, long ago, determined that the construction of the Port of Huinimi disrupted 1.2 million cubic yards of sand per year from making it around the corner. So, when the Army Corps of Engineers got together and to, the federal government decided to do the dredging project, the target was 1.2 million cubic yards of sand bypassed per year. However, because they do it on a two-year cycle, that meant every two years they would have to move 2.4 million cubic yards of sand around the corner to mimic Mother Nature. So, yes, we've had a very successful dredging operation this year, and we also had the deepening project from the port, which, as we heard earlier, is just being completed. So, if you take the biannual dredge process and the deepening project and added those two amounts together, it's still below the 2.4 million cubic yards of sand needed to be moved every two years. So, over the course of the last 20 years, the funding has remained static, and therefore, the amount of sand moved has not ever hit, I'm pretty sure it has never hit that 1.2 million cubic yards of sand per year. So, the translation is, is that our beach is slowly disappearing because we're not, we're not moving the amount of sand that would have moved naturally. So, and, and I'm glad I'm speaking on this topic because on Friday, we're having a meeting with, our, our meeting with Beacon, and it's my intention to, to push so that we could have Beacon be a part of our team, be our lobbyist, to be whatever it takes, get all hands on decks, because we need to get, it would be really nice to not only get that 1.2 million per year or 2.4 million cubic yards every two years, and get additional sand so we can make up the difference that currently exists at Huinimi Beach. So, I'm looking forward to our meeting coming up this Friday with Beacon, and I started the conversation, and hopefully, we could get our hands on additional funding, being that there is this big infrastructure money that's available or going to become available, and I would think that beach nourishment is, is a great example of infrastructure spending, so hopefully, we could be successful on that. I participated in the NAMI walks, and I've, I've learned a lot, and I've, Mental Health Awareness Month is very important. It's very important to recognize that the youth of our community have suffered greatly over this COVID period, and that I know of many youth who have been in my family or in my neighbors who are, have suffered from loneliness and being at home alone while their parents are at work, and so, yes, I, my, for me personally and others on the council, I know that we have been trying to elevate our areas, which are critical to youth, recreation, and the like, and I hope that we could continue to do that. I think that'll do it for me on comments and reports. Does anyone else have any other comment or report to make before we move on to our final item? Okay, so we're going to move on to requests for future agenda items. I'd like to remind council members that all requested items will require a motion, a second, and a majority vote per adopted council policies to be placed on a future agenda. Does anyone have any requests for future agenda items? Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Gama. I wanted to ask for a presentation on the costs and complexities of maintaining a graffiti and vandalism program. I was really dismayed to find out that our memorial at the Alaska 261 Memorial was graffiti just this past week. I'd like to use this information to somehow educate, better educate our public and our youth on respecting public properties, especially a memorial such as ours. So, I would like Ms. Basu, if possible, to share with us the information about what's involved in removing graffiti and the cost of graffiti in our city off public facilities. So, thank you. I'd like a second on that, if possible.
Second.
So, the item will be to have a graffiti, a staff report on graffiti costs and how we go about graffiti.
Vandalism.
Vandalism. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Any other requests for future agenda items? Is your hand up? Councilmember Martinez, I'm sorry, I, you're blocked, I have a little icon in front. I, I have a request. I have a request that, and Councilmember Hernandez made a comment, and it does resonate with me that, you know, this council needs to be the driving vision of this city, and for example, when it comes to the Beach Festival, we haven't been briefed for some time, so anyways, I would hope that we could have an agenda item to discuss the Beach Festival, particularly what we are going to do to promote and youth involvement in our city, and particularly at the Huinimi Beach Festival. I think we had suggested, or I had suggested, that we establish a VIP tent for youth involvement, kind of patterned after our youth involvement fair, which was really nice a couple of years ago. So, I guess my request for future agenda item is to have a discussion about youth activities at the Huinimi Beach Festival.
Can I make a comment, please? You know, during committee reports, we didn't hear a Port City Committee report, and I know there was a meeting, so maybe the next council meeting, you guys can report out on that, on that important meeting. Thank you.
And I'll second Mayor Gama's request.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm trying to recall our, if we could go back on reports, comments, I'm trying to recall our meeting with the port. When did we have?
I don't think we had one, did we?
We, we...
Mister? City Manager?
Yes, you did. You had one. Because I watched it.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem, we had a joint meeting in April. The, the exact date escaped. The focus was on the Community Benefit Fund, and we also shared an update on the activation of a committee to start planning for the Beach Festival.
And where are we at with that committee, committee on the Beach Festival?
The, the, the active committee is, is advancing all the elements of the Beach Festival as we speak, and I'm sure that we will have an update pending here in the very near future, and we could include a, an opportunity to discuss certain features in terms of focus in those type of things.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's what we, my agenda request is, is to make sure that the council is driving the policy and concepts, and particularly as it pertains to youth. I mean, clearly, I think it's important, and I hope the rest of us agree to, to, to really support the youth of our community. So, can we have that on the next agenda?
Mayor, I, I'll have to evaluate and return a date after our meeting tomorrow.
So, but the issue is, is that here we are in mid-May, the festival's coming in August, and, you know, I do believe that the council should be well aware of what the plans are, and we should be given an opportunity to give our input, and so I think it's clear.
And the committee understands that and is preparing content and options for councils to consider at the next, next time they're prepared to present to council.
So, are we looking at the next meeting or the meeting after, or I, I would...
Mayor, I, I'm...
Mayor Gama, we're, this is the city attorney, we're getting way off topic, and this is not an agendized conversation. I suggest we move it along.
Okay, so I would like to request on the next city council meeting that we have a brief and an update and a discussion for the Beach Festival, because I'm not hearing that we're going to have it in two weeks' time, so I don't know. I'm a little frustrated right now, so if anybody has anything else to say, please say it now, otherwise, we'll just adjourn the meeting.
Well, I, I, haven't we ever, I know there was a previous recommendation to have an update on the Beach Festival, and I thought it was seconded, or did that get fall apart? If it isn't, I will second that we need to have an update on the Beach Festival as soon as we can, be it next meeting or at the very latest, the following meeting, only because it's coming up pretty quickly, and there's a lot of great ideas as far as, you know, council input as to how we can make it unique. So, I think that would be, I would second that.
Appreciate that. I think we voted to have it on the agenda, and hopefully, we'll get it on the agenda sooner rather than later. Any other comments before we close this meeting out? Okay, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. The time is now 10:27. The next meeting of the, of the City Council will be Monday, June 7, 2021. This will also be a virtual meeting broadcasting at 6:30 PM from City Hall Council Chambers. Thank you all for attending tonight. Good night.
Good meeting. Thank you.
Night. Thank you.